Good evening, everybody. The time is now six o'clock and I would like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, June the fifteenth. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to ask-
Recording in progress.
Going to ask our city manager, Mr. Hines, to give a brief explanation to the public. Mr. Hines?
Hello, Mayor. Good evening. The, uh, sorry. The meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with state and county stay-at-home orders. And as allowed by the governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. Uh, city council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud by the city count, uh, out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda items, subject to the customary five-minute time limit, unless the same individual also appears in request to speak live during the meeting. We will take the live comments first and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific item is being called, um, if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted, uh, but doing so is not required. Uh, attendees should also see a lower-hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Well, now call the meeting to order. Tina, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. All right, I ask everybody to join us in a silent prayer followed by our flag salute. Please join us in the pledge. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, June eighteenth at nine AM and Saturday, June nineteenth at nine AM. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable fourteen's YouTube channel.
All right. Thank you. Now move on to item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from the council?
Uh, is it possible that we can move, um, the latter items for commissions and committees forward so they don't have to sit through the whole meeting? We have to be there and here no matter what, but they don't necessarily just out of convenience.
Okay, so Councilmember Vandenberg's asking to move item J one and two, which is the city clerk's report for the appointments to the two committees. Uh, move that up to, we would move that after the consent calendar, but before our regular scheduled matters. Uh, would that be okay? Do we have, I don't know if you do see the consensus for that? Mr. Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question. I'd like to know if, um, we know that the adult mentors and, uh, the beautification committee appointment person are on the line now. They may be expecting to come on later. I just want to make sure we don't cut them out.
Good question. Tina, do we know if they are present?
No, I do not see, um, the beautification appoint, um.
Mr. Mayor, uh, my appointment, I don't have a problem with that applicant. He's not here. He's out of the area. So it's no matter to me, we can move earlier or later.
And yours was the, uh, was yours a youth commission?
No, beautification.
Okay, so then we need to know if our youth, uh-
So there is one member for the, uh, adult mentor appointment for the youth commission on the line currently.
Okay.
We can move forward with that.
Okay, how many applicants are there for that appointment?
There are two.
Is that, is the applicant, uh-
We have Matt, we have Matt Hill on the line.
Okay. Okay, so I got a consensus from, uh, Mr. Sandu, Papino, and Lozano, as long as we have everybody online. Okay. All right, then we're going to move that to, um, for those of us who are watching, we're going to remove, remove that, move that to right before our regular, be after our consent, but before our scheduled matters. So proceeding on, uh, is there any additional, uh, items? I would actually, Tina, like to pull item F four for discussion from consent.
Okay.
Anything else from council? No? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to item C, Presentations. Tonight, we have the Galt Youth Commission Student Mentor Appointments and Administering the Oath of Office. Ms. Hubert?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This item is to accept the student member appointments selected by the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors and minister the oath of office. Each student member shall be submitted for acceptance by the city council and shall serve for a two-year term commencing on June one and ending on May thirty-first. There were student member vacant, seven student member vacancies and the applications were distributed to school site, school sites posted on the city's website and on social media. Uh, the commission received five applications, however, only four were accepted due to one student withdrawing their application. And now those four, one was a returning student member. The selected students are Genevieve Akers, Star Enriquez, Damaris Ramirez, Damaris Ramirez, and Joshua Colars. The commission still has three student member vacancies at this time. We do need a motion to accept the student member appointments and after the motion, I will administer the oath of the office to the members on the line. I, I do know one was out of town and that, uh, student member has already scheduled an appointment when they return at the end of June.
Okay. All right. I'm looking for a motion to accept the student mentor appointment selected by the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors and administer the oath of office. Do I have a motion to move that?
It's second.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, second by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
And Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We will now proceed with the, uh, we do either swearing now?
Yes, we do the oath of office so they can, um, participate at their, um, July meeting and have you as councilmembers witness their oath. So I know Genevieve's on the line, Damaris.
Damaris is there and Genevieve was on and I think she, um-
I see her.
Oh, there she is. Sorry.
Okay, and so the other two are out of town, so they will, like I say, one has already scheduled their appointment. So Genevieve and Damaris, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, go ahead and unmute yourself. I instate your name.
I, Genevieve.
I, Damaris.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time
And during such time.
As I am a member, student member of the Galt Youth Commission.
As I am a student member of the Galt Youth Commission.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A commission member according to the best of my ability.
A commission member according to the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations. And city council, if you have any questions?
Congratulations, girls. That oath sounds very serious, doesn't it? And all the defending and all that stuff. We hope you, we hope you're up to it. Do we have any comments from the council for these young ladies?
Just congratulations to all the youth commissioner.
Likewise, congratulations and thank you for doing it.
Okay.
Welcome, ladies, and, um, thank you again for offering to serve. We appreciate that. So well now, uh, do we have any public comment on this item? Written comment, Tina?
We do. We do not.
Okay, Rose, do we have any hands raised online on this item?
We, we do not have any hands raised.
We'll now move on to item two. Subject is the Galt Youth Commission Annual Report to the City Council.
Rose is gonna let-
I am letting them in one by one here. It's just give me just a minute to complete this. And I believe that's all of them.
Whoever the presenter is can go ahead whenever they're ready. They're gonna be-
Good evening, city. Yes. Good evening, sitting council. On behalf of the Galt Youth Commission, thank you for having us here. For those who don't know who the Galt Youth Commission is, the Galt Youth Commission is a student-led council that provides a voice to the youth. In some ways, we do that, are in community service and student-run projects. Like every year, we had ten commissioners on board. This past year, we had six from Liberty Ranch and four from Galt High School. At the end of the year, we had six commissioners leave us. They were Riley Hemanova, Jamie, Gabe Coonsey, Jamie Mahia, Alina Newburger, Ashley Brivas, and Anna Romero. Currently, we'll have four more commissioners, four commissioners returning. There are Genevieve Akers, Isabel Sosa, Alexis Gold, and Alexa Maria Cuavas. This past year, we were hit by COVID. Due to the fact that we didn't have the ability to participate in many events and our monthly meetings were held for Zoom, COVID really changed the structure of everything, but we got through it. Now I'd like to hand it off to Genevieve.
Oh, bear with me. I'm sorry.
Did you kick Genevieve out?
I did not. She's on her way back in. Bear with me.
Okay, councilmembers, I hope you're getting ready with some questions for our wonderful youth commissioners.
Okay, she's in.
Thank you, Isabella. Hello, my name is Genevieve Bakers with the commission. I'll be giving you a briefing of two events we partook in, with the first being Breathe California, where we learned the dangers of second home handsmoke in dwellings to neighbors and innocent children. We plan to soon bring the city council a presentation in which the commission will ask the council to consider an ordinance for this. Secondly, each year, the commission gives scholarships to graduating seniors who excelled in the area of serving the Galt community. This year, we received a whopping seventeen applications and gave two to Liberty Ranch and two to Galt High, with each scholarship being two hundred and fifty dollars. Those who received the scholarships were Gabe Coonsey and Gideon Reed from Liberty, and Miracle Franco and Reyna Salvador from Galt. Thank you once again for the opportunity to share our part in how we help the community this past year.
Okay, hi, I'm Alexis Gold, and I'll be talking about two more things that we did this year. So at the beginning of the year, we started off with the retreat. So usually we do an in-person retreat, but unfortunately, due to COVID, we couldn't do that. But we did get an opportunity to do a really great online one through Pro Youth and Families. And during this retreat, we worked on setting goals for the future and our leadership skills. And then another thing that we did was a project with seniors and we did senior pen pals. And this project was a project in which we reached out to elderly people in the community. We wrote letters to them and we just talked to them because we knew that people can be really isolated due to COVID. We wanted to thank Mark King from the Sunrise Rotary for his support with the project. And we'll be handing it off to the next person.
So in late October, the commission got together and decorated for the city event trunk or treat. With the help of Mayor Sandu and Cow Waste, who donated candy, we were able to put smiles on many kids' faces. Four of our commissioners were helping with traffic control while the others were handing out treats. The city sponsor event was four times more than expected. Now-
Thank you. So hello, uh, my name is Alexa Marloquavas. One of the other projects our commission worked on was cleaning a street through the Adopting a Street program the Beautification Committee offers. We did around two street cleanups taking on Lincoln Way from Terrace Lane to A Street. The previous commissioners had taken on this project and we thought it would be a great idea to continue it. The program states we have to clean four times a year, but since COVID hit, we weren't able to clean as much. We checked in with the city multiple times to ensure we would still be able to meet up, follow COVID safety rules, and clean up the street. As a result, we were able to clean twice in the year. The experience allowed us all to get to know one another as we talked and enjoyed time with each other while also doing good for our community. Our second cleanup was in partnership with the Beautification Committee, who graciously invited the Galt Commission to clean with them. We found a lot of masks near Galt High School, so we knew Lincoln really needed a cleanup. We are very appreciative that we could help out our town and also work together with the Beautification Committee of Galt as this project was based on our partnership. Our sign, which was previously donated by Dry Creek Transport, still stands. Another project the Galt Commission did was the Random Maxikinas Project headed by now former Commissioner Elena Newburger, where we showed our appreciation for Galt's essential workers during the pandemic. Before the Random Maxikinas Week in February, many of the commissioners worked on making handmade masks, cards, and getting cookies for many of the essential workers. These included cafeteria, office, and IT staff, as well as bus drivers from many of our town schools. Galt Siberians were included as well. We are very happy to have done this project. Thank you. Now back to Isabella.
We come to an end, to an end. We would like to thank Lorenzo Hines. Lorenzo came to us in December with our thoughts of the city. We thank you for letting us share ideas, taking our thoughts to heart, and appreciating our perspective, perspectives resulting into the market plan. We loved how Mr. Hines added lots of entertainment as we discussed the lack of it. Last but not least, with the new year, we welcome three new commissioners. Fortunately, we are still looking for three new students. So any recommendations and applicants of you is highly appreciated. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, girls. Genevieve, Alexis, Isabella, and Alexa, you guys all did a very good job. And, uh, I actually feel more comfortable, um, in the city council meetings than I do in the youth meetings with you guys. You guys are intimidating. I look forward to seeing some of your campaign signs one day when you, when you run for city council. Is any of the, uh, Ms. Lamson, I know you're on, do you have any comments as part of the youth commission?
Yes, um, I've been with the youth commission since I was on council. And it, it was a very tough year with COVID. We couldn't get together and, and the bonds weren't made, but we, we still did a lot of things, as you could tell. Um, and one thing that really hit home was that, um, Lorenzo had talked to the kids and a lot of the ideas of the young generation got put into that Galt market plan. Things are changing and sometimes us that are a little older have to come into acceptance of that and like what the younger generation likes because they're going to be the ones spending the money soon. So we really appreciate Lorenzo coming to do that. We don't know if that's ever happened before. We could not recollect that happening. So that was a huge impact. And we also, they, um, talked to you guys. We're going to come to you guys with a recommendation on a no-smoking ordinance in apartments soon. So look for us then. But it's a great group. We, like we said, we need about three more, um, youth. So if you know anybody, high school ages that would like to participate and hopefully we'll get back out there in the community with some of these events. And I don't think anyone has asked us to hand out candy for the Fourth of July, which sometimes we do for the council members, don't we?
I think there's, uh, well, handing out and throwing candy, I, I forget the, uh, rules that they have for the parade, but-
The commissioners walk alongside the council float and hand out candy, but no one's asked us yet. Just saying.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Working on that then. Well, thank you for your comments, Paige. And, uh, if those of you that are watching at home, if you have a, uh, teen that you think would be interested, we encourage you to get involved. You can contact the city clerk's office and we have openings. So it's a great program. I've enjoyed serving on it, um, so far this year. Um, and these are our future leaders, so. I guess without that, uh, do, do any of the council have any comments before we let these young ladies go? Mr. Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank the commissioners for their work this year and certainly the adult commissioners, uh, Ms. Lamson, thank you for your service. Um, I just want to just reiterate to the youth that this is a, um, city council-appointed position, commission. And, uh, this is your commission. This isn't the city council's commission. And so I like the fact that you, um, are bringing ideas forward and, and I've been involved in some of your meetings and, and you, you got a bright group there and you guys can do big things. So uh, certainly, uh, remember that, um, you know, you're representing the youth in our city and, uh, we certainly want to hear from you and, and the fact that, uh, you volunteered your time is, uh, says a lot. And so thank you so much for your hard work over the last year. Uh, hopefully next year you can be in person a little bit more often and, and do some more things. So thank you so much.
Um, Mr. Mayor, very brief. Uh, I also like to thank you for all the youth commissioner for their service. They did a lot of things for the community, clean up the, uh, streets. And I also like to thank you, Ms. Lamson, because since she, well, from, uh, the city council, she's a voluntary and she's a very good mentor. She can mentor these young people. Because these young youth will be our future for our leadership. So thank you for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yeah, I was just curious if, uh, the youth commission, I was just two questions. I was wondering how, since joining the youth commission, how your perception of the community has changed, if at all, and, uh, how this might change your life moving forward?
Any of you ladies want to jump in on that one?
Um, yeah, I feel like after joining, I've definitely been more involved in the community and it's been really fun and interesting learning about how like the government or whatever works in it. And it's just an interesting aspect that from now on I will be looking more into and like be more into like all the voting and such.
Very good.
I agree with Genevieve that it's like a great opportunity to see like the behind the scenes of how the city works and how like that gets done in our community.
I also have gained a bigger appreciation for city council because now I kind of see like what's happening in our city, how's it, how's it happening and what's going into it. For me, since joining the city council, oh, you guys hear me?
You're muted, Isabella.
So personally, um, for me, since joining the city council, there's been a lot of responsibility and teamwork getting. And I've really liked, liked the process. So I don't know, maybe one day I'll run for a city council position when I'm older, like thirty-five or something.
You don't need to wait that long. You can only be eighteen. I think I'm ready to give it to you guys right now and I'll just go home early.
Mr. Natale got on the council at twenty-one?
I believe it was, uh, younger than that, I believe.
So, and as soon as you're ready. Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, John. Have a comment? So, um, you guys obviously learn a lot and you work very hard in all these events. But, um, what is your, how do you find the experience of trying to gain input from the youth of the community so that you're able to, you know, bring their input in to your ideas that, that you in turn bring to the council? You guys felt successful with that or do you find that to be a challenge?
I found that it was very challenging this year to get that done with like not being in person with our classmates and our peers. It's hard to get an opinion on how things are going and what they think. So you have to rely on the people that you're close to and you know.
Yeah, I definitely think it was a bit harder, but I still felt like we were semi-successful because everybody's going through the same situation with the COVID thing. So you kind of have like the same similar situations. So it's easier to kind of get everyone's input.
We couldn't hear you, Isabella, but I think we we, we get the-
I just agree with my fellow commissioners. Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Well, I think, uh, Councilmember Papino made a good point and, uh, echoing to, uh, Councilmember Lozano said that you, you, this commission is an instrument for input. Um, I would encourage you guys to use whatever means possible that, that, uh, you think is, um, the best to reach out to your peers and, uh, and, and, uh, pass that on to us. You can be, um, you're the representative of the youth, that there's concerns in the community or there's questions. You can bring those to the council. That's, that's kind of one of the, the, uh, roles of, of you guys. And so I encourage you to reach out and, and be that, be that instrument, so. Mr. Hines, uh, did you add your mic off? If you don't have a comment, then I think, uh, we will count, vice, do you have a?
Actually, Mayor, I would like to make a comment. I, I just, I just keep the mic off in case so you don't hear the paper rustling back here. Um, I wanted to thank the youth commission. Um, it was a pleasure, uh, presenting to all of you. Uh, thank you for the shout-out here during the meeting. Um, uh, we did have you in mind as we were putting that plan together and hopefully we can bring it home and, uh, you folks will have something to look forward to, uh, you know, as far as housing and new experiences here in Galt in the future. So, uh, I'm glad, uh, we were able to get your input. And Mayor, you are right. It is more intimidating being in front of the youth commission than any of our other commissions because they are young and bright and sharp. So not saying that we're not, but they're, they're a very talented group of folks. Thanks, kids. And, uh, and thank you, Ms. Lamson, as well.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lamson. Again, thank you, girls, and I look forward to seeing you on our next, uh, youth commission meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right, do we have any, uh, public, written public comment regarding this second item? Tina?
We do not.
All right, any hands raised online, Rose?
There is no hands raised.
Okay, then we will move on with our next item D, which is our public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS semicolon forward slash forward slash US zero-two web dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash eight-two-four-two-four-eight-three-zero-zero-five-three webinar ID eight-two-four-two-four-eight-three-zero-zero-five-three.
All right, thank you. Do we have any written comment this evening?
Uh, no written comment.
Okay, do we have any hands raised online, Rose?
If I can get my microphone to unmute, um, there is no hands raised.
Okay. All right, without any public comment, we will move on to item E, which is going to be reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papano.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Councilmember Vanderburg.
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Councilmember Lozano.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, myself, I actually attended our special Galt Public Safety Meeting last night. It was special because we actually had rescheduled it. We discussed a few items. One of them was to bring traffic concerns as a regular agenda item so that we can get updates from PD and Public Works and the committee members. We talked about fireworks safety with our fire chief and our police chief. And both CSD and Galt PD are going to be rolling out some social media educational information regarding fireworks safety and and protocol, proper handling of fireworks and and also some general fire safety measures as we move into summer and we near a time where we're going to have fireworks. That was a very good discussion. I will be sharing that as well. And I would encourage all the council members to share those when that comes out from them. We had a market plan presentation from our from our city manager to the committee. We had some good inputs and good questions asked on that. And overall, it was a very good, uh, it was a very good discussion. And I want to thank Councilmember Lozano for attending as a as a spectator last night as well. Other than that, I just wanted to mention that I did, this is outside of our formal, but I I did was able to have the honor of attending a funeral this yesterday for a World War Two veteran of Galt who was ninety six years old, longtime Galt family, been here since before nineteen hundred, I believe. Councilor Vanderberg also joined me. Thank you very much for that. So I just want to say thank you to the family for allowing us to to be a part of that. It was a it was a great way to lay a great hero to rest. So without that, or other than that, I have nothing else. So we will move on to our information consent calendar, item F. And we were looking for a motion to approve the following. Item one, minutes of the regular meeting of June first, twenty twenty one. Item two, receive a file warrants for period ending June second twenty twenty one. Item three, treasures report for period ending April twenty twenty one. Item five, the agreement with J and A Steam Cleaning and Russ Brown's Mobile RV Body Repair for graffiti removal. And item six, the extension of the two point two million dollar interfund loan related to the purchase of real property at one forty enterprise court. Do I have a motion to approve those items? Second. Member Lozano seconded by Councilor Vanderburg, I believe. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Did you shake your head? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, seconded by Councilmember Vanderburg.
Oh. Sorry.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papano.
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi.
Consent calendar passes five to zero. Now move on to item F four, which is an item I pulled. It is the Police Department vehicle purchase. The recommended action is the adoption of resolution approving the purchase of three police vehicles from Folsom Lake Ford under the state cooperative contract for the total cost of hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and forty four dollars using the measure R funds. I just had a couple of questions that I just wanted to ask regarding this item. And the first was I I saw that the thirty eight thousand and change. I don't have the exact figure right here, but was that for just the purchase of the vehicles and then the the outfitting of the vehicles, I'm assuming is extra. And I was wondering if there was just a total figure for each car?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. The thirty eight thousand eight hundred and forty eight is the cost per vehicle that we've requested. And the outfitting is already budgeted at and so that's already been is is ready to go once we receive the vehicles.
Okay. So that I'm assuming the outfitting of the vehicles also comes out of the measure R funding as well?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So is that going to be? That's that doesn't come back to council because the cost is below the thirty thousand threshold. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, my next question was of out of the cars that we approved in twenty nineteen that we the the Dodge Chargers and the other, I don't forget those other vehicles, but and then the addition with these three, how many how many of the older cars does this leave in the fleet that are that are still waiting to to rotate out?
So the the purchases in twenty nineteen were, that's a, you know, six vehicles is a large purchase for a police department our size. That was a result of having to forego a vehicle purchases for several years prior. And even with those purchases, we're still catching up to where we should be. So after these vehicles are purchased, we'll still have several vehicles in the twenty fifteen twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen range. That will be due to be replaced within a certain timeframe. The the what we've done in the past is we we've asked Public Works actually to provide some input in terms of a what's appropriate for vehicle replacements on an annual basis for the PD. And we've been trying to operate off that in terms of requests from council for purchases at three patrol vehicles, three marked patrol vehicles and one unmarked patrol vehicle per year. That allows us to catch up and it also allows us to rotate out vehicles at about the time that they should. And and so it's kind of an expected and anticipated cost as opposed to foregoing for several years and asking for a large sum because we've foregone purchases in the past.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that it usually takes, I think the staff report said six to eight months. So that obviously the mileage is going to be much higher by the time those family leave service. So, all right. Well, thank you. That answers my questions. I I just want to also say for those that are watching, this is an example of what else measure our dollars are doing to continue to to support our police department. Should this should this be approved tonight? So without that, I don't have any questions. Does any of the council have any questions? All right. Then I will look for a motion to approve item F four, which is the adopt resolution approving the purchase of these three vehicles from Folsom Lake Ford under a state cooperative contract, one eighteen twenty three fourteen B for the total cost of a hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and forty four dollars utilizing measure R funds. Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by, somebody put their hand up. I don't know who it was. Uh, we'll we'll let Councilmember Papano have the second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papano.
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion approves five zero. Okay. All right, we will now move on to the item that we moved forward, which is going to be the item J, which is City Clerk's Report. Subject is going to be a beautification committee appointment. Ms. Hubert.
Okay. Good evening again. So this item is the recommendation for Vice Mayor Sandu to appoint a community community member to the beautification committee to fill a vacant position with a term ending December twenty twenty two. Vice Mayor Sandu appointed Tiffany Manning on December eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and she submitted her resignation on June seventh, twenty twenty. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the committee not holding meetings, the city clerk's office did not post a vacancy until recent restrictions were lifted. The vacancy was posted on social media and on the city's website. And applications were received from, and I apologize, Shamin Keshawars and Mara Firestone, who both meet the required qualifications. And Vice Mayor Sandu, I'll let you announce your appointment.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I would like to appoint a Mara Firestone to the beautification committee. Uh, she's the reason she's a long time Galt resident. She's also very active in the community. And she also worked with parent teacher association in River Oak Elementary from two thousand six to two thousand twelve. And I believe she's not available to make any comment. I very congratulation. But she's out of the area. She don't have no internet. But I like to, on the behalf of her, I like to thank you all the council have to approve the appointment. I thank you, everyone.
Okay. We don't actually have to vote on that appointment. I believe that is in a new discussion. Thank you, sir, for filling that position and welcome. I know Mara's not here, but I I do know Ms. Firestone and her husband, and I think she'll be a great addition. So. Is there any comment from council on this matter? Okay. Do we have any written comment on this item?
No written comment.
Any hands raised online, Ms. Roddicker?
We do not have any hands raised online.
Okay. Well, then we will move forward to item J two, which is Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentor Appointment.
Okay, so this item is for Councilmember Papano to appoint a community member to the Galt Youth Commission to fill a vacant position and remaining term ending December twenty twenty four. Councilmember Papano appointed Michael Hodge on December fifteenth, twenty twenty, and he submitted his resignation on February fifth, twenty twenty one. The city clerk's office posted the vacancy on social media and on the city's website. And applications were received from Matt Hill and Talon Harris, who both meet the required qualifications. Councilmember Papano.
So I'd like to thank obviously Matt Hill for his application. Mr. Harris actually looked back at some applications from twenty eighteen and talked to some people who were kind of interested but ended up not applying. So it's good to have significant interest in the end, is to appoint Matt Hill. He's a has a experience and investment in the city that I think is going to be beneficial to the to the commission. All right, looks like we have Mr. Hill here. Mr. Hill, would you like to say say anything?
Hi, I was just to thank you for the the appointment to the the committee. I've lived in Galt for a little over six years. I've been involved in Sacramento County as a whole through my work at the Sacramento Public Library. I've been with them for almost eight years. So I'm very familiar with the Galt Public Library and all the others. I've been members, I've been a member of other larger committees for the Sacramento County, the State Public Library. So I feel like I think I can I can help the Galt Youth Commission uh, get some things done and help the committee, help the community. And so, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir, and thank you for your application to serve. Does any of the council have any? See, the council have any comments for Mr. Hill or any other comments on this item? Okay. All right. Do we have any written comment on this?
No written comment.
Okay. Any hands raised online, Rose?
No hands raised online.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill, for joining us tonight and congratulations. And I'll see you in the youth commission meetings. All right, we will move on now to back to item G, which is our scheduled matters notice of public hearing. Item G one is going to be public hearing to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty one and twenty one through twenty two annual budgets with appropriations for midterm budget adjustments and approve the fiscal year twenty one twenty two master fee schedule, the capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty twenty one twenty one uh, through twenty four twenty five and FY twenty one to twenty two California constitutional appropriations limit. Ms. Tyson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll actually be providing most of the presentation tonight. Ms. Tyson and the rest of the team will also be available for questions and also for testimony. And so I wanted to tell the public and also the council members that this presentation that I'm about to present focuses on three of our operating funds. It's the general fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund, and also Fund Forty Seven, which is for Measure R. We're also going to discuss the changes in the capital improvement program and also just a short blurb about the master fee schedule. The budget report was released a few days, I'm sorry, a couple of weeks ago. And so we believe that there was adequate time for the public to review the schedules and all of the items that were in the budget. And so while the city has thirty one funds, I'm going to focus on three tonight. And I just wanted to mention that the overall increase in the appropriation that we're requesting citywide is about nine point three million. For budget year, it's about two point one million. However, most of those increases are driven by the utility funds, the street funds and the citywide capital acquisition funds. And so those are special revenue funds that are intended for specific purposes. Um, I wanted to focus tonight on the general fund, which is our main operating fund, which is where most of our policy and the impacts of our policy lie. And I'm going to go forth right now. And council members, as with all budget presentations, this is a conversation and not so much a presentation. So if you have questions, please let me know. Or let and because the staff and I are here to respond to those questions. So we start off here with a income statement for the general fund. And we've broken the statement down into two sections, actually three sections. The revenues, the expenditures and transfers in and transfers out. The revenues are up at the top. And what we've done, and we've got four columns here. And the first two columns are the adopted revenue and expenditure and transfers in out budget versus the proposed budget for those items. And you can see that the numbers have ticked upwards in the current year and also in the budget year. We will discuss the actual specific variances between those numbers in the next slide. But I wanted everyone to see the format. This is the same format that you saw when we presented the ten year financial plan to you as well. These are the, this slide represents the variances between the adopted and proposed for the current year and the adopted and proposed for the budget year. A couple of things I wanted to point out to the council that the property taxes for both years, we're we're anticipating a slight increase in revenues and for property taxes. So that's good to see that they're still heading in a positive direction. Sales tax, also an increase. We're very pleased to see the increase in the budget year, and we believe that that is mainly the result of COVID subsiding and businesses reopening. We had a regarding T O T, I believe there's a program in place that restricted the receipt of T O T and recognition that COVID is impacting our businesses. And and so we show the results of that in this line item. There's also adjustments in franchise fees. And and again, these are one time in nature, and so we won't see those so much in in the current or in the budget year, but there is a one year bump there. So the bottom line for revenues is that we're showing one point three six five million in increased revenues. But what I want the public to see and also the council to see is that there's seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars in intergovernmental revenues. And these are all revenues that we receive from other governments, usually in the form of grants. And so those grants are good for this year. And as you can see in the in the column next to it, that amount is zero because we don't like to count grants unless we actually get the grants. But what I wanted to do was make sure that the public understood that one point three six five million. And if you back out that seven hundred thousand, we're we're sitting at about five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand in increased revenues. And so while we're holding steady, I wouldn't say that we're doing gregariously well. In the budget year, we've we were looking at an increase of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in revenues. And so therein sort of lies where I believe that we typically are. And that we're somewhere between four hundred and six hundred thousand dollars of revenue growth per year. And so I've got to figure out a way to work with the council and to work with the staff and work with the public to figure out a way to drive these revenues northward and try to push that that delta as high as we can get that delta. Well, on the expenditure side. Well, on the expenditure side, um, we, um, have expenditure increases in all departments. And, uh, except for one administration, but there is still increases built in there as well. We've just had some offsetting expenditures. And, um. These increases total eight hundred and eight thousand in the current year. Two hundred and seventy three thousand of those expenditures are new projects. Five hundred and thirty five thousand of those projects are carryover projects from a prior fiscal year that have already been approved by council. Um, in the budget year, you see the continuation of those new projects and you see that the expenditure level has drastically reduced. Uh, from eight oh eight down to two sixty eight, and that reflects the, uh, the assumption that the carryforwards that we brought into the current year. Are going to be completed in the current year, and they will not carry forward to the budget year. We also have the transfers out. We have transfers in as well. Um, but there, I wanna focus a little bit on the transfers out, uh, because of the sensitivity of these areas. Uh, the Northeast and West Side L and L, uh, the general fund subsidizes those. Uh, lighting and landscape districts because we're all aware that there is funding issues there. And the collections versus the expenditures, um, are lopsided or upside down. Uh, we've also got the Parks and Recreation contribution, um, the general fund share of supporting the Parks and Rec programs. So I, you see that in the current year, uh, we're increasing that contribution by eighty one thousand. And in the budget year, we're increasing that by a hundred and seventy six thousand. In the current year and budget year, as I mentioned, um, in the current year, we're looking at eight hundred and eight thousand dollars in increased expenditures. And as I've mentioned, two seventy three of those dollars are, uh, new projects. And, uh, five hundred and thirty five thousand are prior year carryovers. Now, um, I'll briefly go through, um, these new projects and, uh, but staff can give you more details. Um, as we, um, as council desires and as the public desires. Uh, for administration, our human resources department is, uh, requesting a slight increase in their budget to address, uh, laboratory costs and cost of printing. All things associated with new hires, onboarding and recruiting. With our finance and I T function, uh, the I T department is looking at purchasing a device, uh, that would help with our storage. And, um, of our information technology records, and, uh, it's very crucial to our infrastructure. Community development has grants, uh, that they currently, um, anticipate or current grants that they currently have. And, um, councils actually already approved these grants. We're just merely asking to place it into the budget, uh, this year. Uh, for non-departmental, the fifty five thousand represents an increase in the city's liability insurance premium. Um, those premiums have gone up somewhere between ten and twelve percent, um, over the last year or so, and so this represents the increase that we now have to bear. If you look over non-departmental in the budget year, you see that eighty two thousand. And so that eighty two thousand is, is mostly driven by another increase in our insurance premium, which is about, we put seventy eight thousand in there. Um, because that is what our insurers are telling us. Uh, the prior year carryovers, uh, in the administration area, we have twenty thousand dollars in carryovers for the commissions and committees. Or related to the commissions and committees and also our economic development, um, office. Uh, finance and I T, it's a continuation of the, of the, uh, uh, new project that we've brought on board. In addition to a number of contracts that have been carried over from prior years as well. Community development, uh, a number of grants that have been carried over from the prior year. And then with non-departmental, um, we are, um, um, increasing the, um. Uh, we're increasing, uh, the prior year carryover, I believe is for the IDC. And, uh, increasing the, uh, the budget by four thousand, and I believe the, uh, eighty two thousand, the other four thousand there is for the IDC as well. Uh, police, uh, we've got carryover for equipment and, uh, and again, uh. Chief Small can tell you more about that. Same with Public Works, those are carryovers for projects that were approved by council. And again, the whole carryover column is, again, they were approved by council in a prior year. And, um, and brought over to this year because they were not completed in that prior year. So as we saw on the last slide, as I mentioned, we've got two hundred and seventy three thousand in, um, new projects. We've got five hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in carryover projects. What I am, um, requesting from council is that instead of augmenting this year's budget. By eight hundred and eight thousand, I would like the authority to redirect salary savings that we have in the current year. To address the two hundred and seventy three thousand. We have salary savings that exceed two hundred and seventy three thousand. And I, I thought that it may be prudent to utilize those salary savings for the two seventy three. Instead of asking for additional budget authority. So the actual ask that we're asking for in the general fund, if that approach is approved, will be five hundred and thirty five thousand instead of eight hundred and eight thousand.
Mr. Heinz, just to jump in here.
Yes.
Just to clarify for those that are watching, so the, uh, the salary savings you refer to are the, uh, were some of the budget. Uh, cuts and, and, uh, freezing of positions and things that we did last year, um, in regards to, um. The, uh, budget crisis that we went through, that those are the, those are the, uh, carryovers that you're referring to, correct?
Uh, those are the, 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 the salary savings, yes, they're a result of those efforts and also, um, to salary savings from, um. Just turnover, just employee turnover and trying to fill vacant positions.
Okay. If, as you move forward in your presentation, if any of the council has a comment as we go through these slides, if you have a particular question on a slide. Just put your hand up and I will call on you and you can, uh, go ahead and ask. You don't have to wait till the end as we go through this.
Correct. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um, so that's the general fund picture. I'm gonna move on to Parks and Rec. Were there any questions about the general fund from the members?
Uh, one more question, uh, and, and again, thank you for the, the long, uh, meeting we had today, uh, regarding, uh, most of this, but I just wanted to, uh, bring up one. So the, the, uh, transfers in for the Parks and Rec, uh, you know, typically it's been north of like a million, uh, a little over a million. The reason it's so low this year was a question I asked you was because, um. Uh, because of all the expenditure cuts. So it's not like, it's not that we're actually having to contribute less to the Parks and Rec. Uh, deficit, but we just didn't have to put as much because, um, they, we made, they made massive cuts in the market. Uh, was closed part-time and all those things, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, there, there, you'll see in the following slide that there is a significant decrease in, um, in the expenditures for the Parks and Rec Fund.
Okay, Councilmember Blazano, you have your hand up?
I believe Councilmember Papino actually had his hand up first.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Papino.
So a question, uh, with the, uh, salary savings from the frozen or vacant positions. Um, while we're rolling those savings forward to, uh, cut the ask for our budget year. Will we be, uh, again, uh, reassessing those positions to determine if we've survived with them? This long, uh, you may not need to bring those back.
Right, uh, the, uh, there is language in the resolution, and by the way, we, we're introducing a revised resolution tonight. And I believe the city clerk has, uh, provided that to the members. And so there is language in there that allows for a review of the longtime frozen positions. As well as those expenditures that have been, um, uh, frozen as a result of COVID. And so all of that will come under review before any restoration. It has taken place in this particular year with the longtime frozen positions and, and for the public, let me, let me clarify. There is basically two buckets of frozen positions. There is, I, as we call it, the long time or historically frozen positions, and I believe there were thirteen of them. And those positions have been vacant for years. And I believe one of our directors had mentioned, one of those positions was sitting on an org chart from nineteen ninety four. And it's still vacant, and so we've eliminated roughly, I believe, seven of those thirteen. And, um, we will continue to assess and work with each department and where they need to hang on to those historically. Um, historical vacancies, then we'll let them hang on, but right now everybody's still under review. So that's the first bucket. The second bucket is the positions that we, uh, put, uh, froze because of COVID. And it basically provided a little sort of safety fund for us in case things went really south as a result of COVID. And so that's, that's consists of roughly seven or eight positions. And I'll be assessing the necessity for those positions going forward into this new budget year. But I just wanted to make sure everyone understood the two buckets. And Council, Councilmember Papino, did I answer your question?
You did, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Blazano?
Yes, Mr. Heinz, I, I wanted two, two things. I wanna thank you for the, um. The packet of information that was put in our boxes a couple of weeks ago that related to this, and then I wanna thank you also for. Your, uh, couple of hours, uh, that we spent together going through this. If you could for me, please go to slide number three, just briefly. We have, um, in the, in, in you, and you explained this, but I, I just wanna, uh, ask one last question regarding it. We have transfers out, um, the L and L subsidies and then our general fund contribution to Parks and Recreation. The L and L subsidy, that's, that's about a hundred and four thousand this, this year, and it goes down to five hundred, uh, next year. That, let, let me ask this, if the, the money that comes into the L and L, can that be spent in general fund? In the general fund at all?
Meaning the transfer can go from the general fund to L and L, but can the L and L have then come back to the general fund? Uh, typically with special revenue funds, um, it's usually a one-way trip. And, um, they can make loans to the general fund, but not really, um, transfers unless those transfers relate to central service costs.
Okay, so that's, okay, so my point is this, w- we have a restricted fund in which we're, uh, taking in money. Uh, yet our general fund is, is subsidizing it over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and, and I, and I think for the public's knowledge, therein lies part of our issue where. Um, you know, we have a level of service and in, in, in my humble opinion, I still don't think it's a, a, a level that is expected by the community. Uh, for our lighting and landscape, but yet we're still subsidizing it a hundred thousand dollars out of general fund. And, and general fund money we can use, uh, in, in many other areas, but, um, but that will, that will benefit the community, including Parks and Recreation. Um, but yet we're, we're paying it, uh, over to the lighting and landscape districts and so. And, and, and I, I, I just wanna say one last thing on the slide. I, 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 I wanna applaud you. For, um, the wording under Parks and Recreation for contribution. Uh, in the past, there was some, uh, conception of, of city staff that that was a subsidy. And, uh, you know, Parks and Recreation is a general fund op- oper- uh, operational, um. Fund, and, uh, there should be some contribution to the, uh, to the Park and Recreation Fund from the general fund. I don't know that, uh, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars a year is the number, um, but I will work on that. Uh, but, but thank you for that and, and, uh, and, uh, and I just wanted to point those things out because. Um, you know, unless it's central service cost, it can't go, the L and O money cannot go to, uh, general fund expenditures, so, thank you.
Very good, and, and if, and if it's, if I may, um, um, ask your indulgence, I just wanted to reiterate what you just said. That if we, the, the general fund no longer had the, um, obligation to support or provide support to the Northeast. Or West Side L and Ls, you can see, um, the readers, um, the, the public and the council members can see. That that's two hundred and twenty nine or two hundred and twenty three thousand, or I'm sorry, over in the, I'll, I'll read from the budget here. Uh, two hundred and thirty thousand plus sixty six thousand that would stay in the general fund. If we found a way to make those lighting and landscape districts self-sufficient. And so I, I, that's, and that's a good goal to have, and that's on my list of things to do.
Councilmember Vanderburg, you got a question?
I believe the council member is muted.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, back to slide three on the same area. Uh, the right-hand column there shows those same items from the North Lighting and Landscaping, you know, it's eighty two thousand, then it drops to five hundred on those two. Just so everyone's aware, why is that dropping to, you know, we're just talking about how we're constantly feeding it, but why is it dropping in that year?
So it's dropping because this slide represents the variance. And so what we've done in the current year is that we took a more conservative approach, and I'm gonna go back to slide two. In the current year, we took a more conservative approach and went with a hundred and forty four and forty two as the adopted, uh, transfers out. And we had to increase those transfers once we had, uh, once we assessed how much, uh, those transfers really needed to be. We up, increased those transfers by about eighty thousand dollars. Eighty two thousand dollars for Northeast, and we increased it by twenty two thousand dollars for the West Side. Now, when we put the budget together back in June, we did a good job of estimating. The transfers that would be necessary in the budget year. Because the adopted budget revenues or the adopted budget, um, transfers were actually at two twenty nine and at sixty five thousand. And so we, we did a good job estimating those, and therefore that variance is very small. Because there's not much adjustment needed. We, we pretty much nailed it, uh, for the budget year. And so that's why that variance is so small, and so the public is confused. Normally I would show the variance and, um, the, uh, show the variance and the last slide together. However, that takes up a lot of real estate, um, and I was a little concerned about squeezing everything into one document and having a font really small. And so, um, I also wanted to focus, um, some attention on the variances as well. But yeah, the smaller the variance, that's the better job we've done with estimating things. So seeing five hundred dollars in two lines, yeah, um, uh, Finance Director Tyson and her team, yeah, they nailed it.
Thank you. I, I did find this much easier to digest, by the way, I appreciate it.
Okay.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Heinz, I just wanted to add to, you know, as, uh, I mentioned in our conversation today. Um, you know, I know we had a real candid conversation about the perception of budgets, um, and spending in the city and how, uh, you know, there's been. Um, for lack of a better word, you know, the city got burned a little bit with previous administration, um, when it came to some budget and it got us in a real jam. Um, which, which a lot of us here that are serving now, all of us that are serving now, but three of us, uh, started out. Really having to take a huge step backwards instead of forwards, and we're still, um, trying to dig out of that, but, um. Uh, we hired you for, obviously, um, for many reasons, one of which was your expertise in finance. Um, clearly we, there's a certain amount of inherent, uh, um, trust that we have with you, uh, that you're digging into this stuff and, and, and looking hard. I reiterated that, uh, how much that's important that you do that, um, and that, uh. That, um, you do right by us that put you in this position and you have promised to do so. I like that the numbers are very straightforward and easy to understand, and the way you explained it to me today was, was very, uh. Very easy to digest like Councilmember Vanderburg said. I wanna just mention the, the finance, um, uh, the finance I T. For those of you don't know, um, uh, even though there's some additional ask there, you've actually kind of been doing some really, uh. I guess house cleaning, you should call it, um, with the, with the I T department and getting, getting things in order there, getting the house in order. Um, which is important coming off of, you know, the, uh, the, uh, ransomware attack that we had. Um, I liked that you came in, you didn't sugarcoat anything, and you got right to work with that, and, uh. I know that, that when you come to ask for something, it's not just, uh. You know, you're asking because you really have to have it. It's not just, uh, a frivolous thing, which you explained to me today. So I always wanna say that for those of you that are watching that don't know, uh, the behind the scenes stuff that's going on, so. Uh, that's all I have at this point. We can, uh, go ahead and move forward if you want. Count Christ, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Heinz, uh, if you can look at the slide number four. Uh, can you might be, there is a new request on finance ID and community development. Can you a little bit more explain on, uh, these figures are?
Very good. I'm gonna let, um, Finance Director Tyson and, um. Our Community Development, uh, Director Greg Hoffman, address those.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and, uh, council members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Great question. As Lorenzo indicated, the IT department is looking to provide a more robust backup solution, and that's the fifty-four thousand. So the carryforwards in finance are primarily around some IT work, but also the CFD work that we've been engaged in from a few years. And so that carryforward is around services to provide us the expertise to finalize those CFDs and the annexations of developments going into those CFDs. Does that answer your question on finance?
Yes, the last question is, you know, sixty-nine thousand four hundred, that's the current year we are expecting to spend on finance, right?
That's next year, and that is the backup solution repeated there, along with the contract having to do with. It's a, it's a it's, it's going to provide us a better reporting tool coupled with our existing systems. And that, so there's a piece of that that is about the reporting tool.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. T.
And Vice Mayor, you wanted to know about community development as well?
Yes, sir.
Sure. In the numbers you see, when you see the two forty-one, that was a prior grant. Part of it was the California Energy Commission grant that we were working on. And when you see the one fifty coming forward, that's part of our LEAP and our REAP grants that we're working on the housing element with. So this line is all grant-based.
So that's why there is nothing in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, right?
We don't know what those grants may be. We haven't applied for those yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
All right. Any further questions? All right, then I will, before I move on to the Parks and Rec Department, I, I wanted to let the council and the public know that, and I'm going to back up a couple of slides here. So for the budget year, the increase in revenues is four hundred and eighteen thousand. And that's compared with revenue increases of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Now, in addition to the items that you see here, there are pressures on the general fund that aren't part of this equation. And I wanted to let the council know verbally what those pressures are, and also make sure the public is aware what those pressures are, and we will be addressing those pressures going forward. And so the first pressure that we're dealing with is an unstable economy. Now, the federal government is providing stimulus payments in various areas to various segments of our society. At some point this year, those stimulus statements, payments will cease. And so everyone will essentially be on their own once again. We really don't know what that's going to do to the economy. And we don't know it's a good thing or a bad thing, but it is uncertain at this point. And so we, from my perspective, I really have a wait-and-see attitude. The second thing that's a pressure on this budget is the landscaping item. And because of revenue shortfalls, council made some really hard decisions last budget cycle and reduced some of those services. I have to now figure out how to add those services back and, and stay within the constraints of this budget. But it is a pressure that's not seen in these numbers. The other thing that we're dealing with is we're in the middle of labor negotiations with our three bargaining units. And so we've got that pressure as well. We've just, we're kind of in the middle of the process. We have not finalized anything. But that's also a pressure that is not in these numbers. So I wanted everyone to just be aware of how we're doing, and I think that four eighteen is more indicative of how we're doing than the one-three-six-five. And, but I wanted everyone to know that we're doing the best we can, and we will continue to make sure that this budget is valid, balanced and fluid and providing the services that the citizens of Galt are paying for. So I wanted to make that statement. If council members have any questions about that, any of those statements, I'd love to take questions.
Yeah, Mr. Heinz, you told me earlier today in our meeting that the four eighteen, you, you said you used a figure of around five hundred-ish, you think is really kind of the, the, the the average or that you've, in, in your ten months, again, emphasize you only been here ten months, that's going to take some time. But that you do think that's a pretty ballpark figure on what the, the general fund is actually growing. And although that might look good, you, you said something to me that you, but although that might look good, but it's that the expenditures will be better, you feel are outpacing that. Can you just reiterate that?
And, and so, so for the folks watching, you know, what we try to do is make sure that the increase in revenues is always trying to outpace the increase in expenditures. Those expenditures, we don't, we have some control over the expenditures, but for, for the most part, you know, we, we do a lot of business with vendors and we have to deal with increasing pricing. We have salary schedules and we have increasing salaries. We have increasing pension costs because our friends at Calpers sends, sends us a bill once a year, and, and that bill never seems to, it rarely goes down. Let's just put it that way. It always seems to be going up. And so we have to, we have to, for the most part, anticipate that these expenditures are going up. And so the challenge, the strategic challenge that we face as a staff is to figure out ways to bring proposals before council that not only drive these revenues northward, but also provide needed services for the community. And so that's where we're focused as an executive team.
Thank you for that.
And so if there are no further questions, I will move on to Parks and Recreation Fund.
I just have one, one comment on what you just said. You know, four hundred and eighteen thousand, like you said, seems like a little, quite a bit of money, but I just want to remind everyone that, that just this year, our liability insurance increased ten to twelve percent, eighty-two thousand a year. That, that is not totally within our control. And so we have to be, just be cognizant of those, those increases year after year.
That is correct, sir. Thank you. And so the next budget I wanted to present to council. And again, I, I present these budgets, the general fund is our general operating budget. But, you know, it's, that's the standard part of any presentation to the council or to the public when it comes to the budget. The, but during my time here in Galt, there are two funds that I've noticed garner a lot of public attention. And I want to make sure that we get those funds out front. And the first fund is the Parks and Recreation Fund, because our beloved Galt market is funded out of this fund. You will see up in the revenue lines, the first line in the revenues and the first line in the expenditures, that the Galt market is listed. You can see that the Galt market was originally budgeted at two-point-five-four-seven million in revenues. We had to reduce that estimate by two, two-point-three-five-five million or two-point-three-five-six million. That's a reduction of about a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Now, even though that's a reduction of a hundred and ninety-one thousand, what it shows me, the new guy, is that the, the Galt market is still a very viable entity for the city of Galt. And the fact that we're still making two, two-plus million on the market in a COVID year tells me a lot about the strength of that market and the strength of the folks who come to come to the market and do business at the market. So I was very impressed by that number. You will see that on the revenue side, that there were reductions in parks, recreations, and the aquatic center. And that is a reduction of program, as the result of program reductions because of COVID and the fact that we had to shut down a fair number of programs. What I'd like to bring to council's attention is the expenditure side. And I'd like to call out Director Solis, Armando Solis, because he pivoted when he understood that the revenues were declining. And so he turned around and also reduced expenditures in a like way to ensure that the fund didn't inherit a sort of a negative you know, impact to the fund balance. And so after all said and done, in a COVID year, there's actually a contribution to the fund balance of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, which is mainly driven by a land sale later, or I believe it happened before my tenure here. And, but I wanted to just commend Director Solis for a job well done. And I know he's not used to getting compliments, so he's probably going to be shy about this, but I, I wanted you all to know. So that's Parks and Recreation, and the next item is Measure R. And I wanted to put Measure R out there because, again, we have advocates of the Measure R Fund. I wanted everyone to see on the revenue side that we're estimating an additional two hundred thousand dollars in Measure R tax revenue for this year, and also two sixty-two for Measure R tax revenue for the next year. So things are going well for this particular fund. The other thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that the Galt Police Department is utilizing, utilizing these funds in a manner that is consistent with the Measure R code section. As you can see, the police field operations that we have, utilization of about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I believe that's mostly for equipment and various needs for the Galt PD for this year. And you can see next year that there's actually, if you look at the variance for the budget year, if everything holds firm, as far as the expenditure levels, there's actually a contribution to the general Measure R Fund of two fifty-nine, five sixty-nine. So this fund, there is some good news in that it continues to be viable and a good source of a, a good resource for the Galt Police Department. And I put this out there for the advocates of this particular fund to let them know that we're, you know, we're going to make sure that this fund gets the utmost transparency. And so, Mayor, council members, that concludes my discussion on the funds. I'm going to move to CIP next. And if there's any questions about Parks and Rec or Measure R, I'd be happy to take those now.
I just wanted to comment a little bit on the Measure R, just, just to say that those of you that are watching, this is a great example of how something as small as a half-cent sales tax, special tax measure that is, that is, you know, approved by the voters and, and earmarked specifically for a specific use, such as in this case, public safety can be such a great tool and all the great things we've been able to do with this funding and, and how the fund just seems to grow exponentially. And, and this, this was such a great thing that the voters passed in, in two thousand and eight and continues to be a great thing for the city of Galt. So I just wanted to point that out, that I was amazed to see these numbers, so.
Thank you, sir. Any, any more questions or comments from council members?
I have a quick comment, piggybacking on the mayor. I would hate to think where our police department would lie without this fund.
Yes. I agree. Agreed.
We wouldn't be get, we wouldn't have up-to-date equipment, I can tell you that. We wouldn't have been able to approve body cameras lately, and we wouldn't have graffiti abatement and school resource officers and all those things that are going on, but yeah.
Very good. Very good. All right. So I'm going to move on to our capital improvement project area. And so the, the capital improvement project, or we call it the CIP, is a multi-year plan that our Public Works Department, that's Director Selling and his team, put together and basically it lays out all the capital projects that have, that are planned for the next probably five years. And what we've, what we try, what we've done here is let the council and the public know that we are adding projects to the CIP list for twenty-twenty-two. And two of those projects, as you can see, come from the general fund. We've got one, two, three, four projects, Streets Water and Wastewater, that are there for preventative maintenance for the, the, the related system that, that are, that's mentioned there. We've also got some increases related to, or project related to the gun range, Corillian, and the Fourth Street ADA sidewalk improvements. And so I'm going to step through each project to give the council and the public just a little background. Before I go to that step, I just wanted to isolate those projects that were coming out of the general fund. And so we've got the library expansion project, and this is mainly to support inspections for public work staff. We've got City Hall renovation, which we will talk about just a second. Our Galt PD HVAC duct rehab, the PD is in a building that's about twenty years old. And so it's showing major signs of age, and so we're having to do a little work in the HVAC. And as you can see down at the bottom, we're looking at doing some exterior rehab, and that's actually a roof repair. And so we want to make sure that that building continues to be viable for years to come. And in addition, we're doing the annual pavement rehab to make sure that our, our PCI stays at a good level. And, and it's always something to brag about. So as here and in the staff report, I've laid out just general statements about the, the CIP projects that we're adding. And as I mentioned, the police exterior rehab is about rehabbing the roof and the building envelope. The building has been the subject of major water leaks, leaks. That was one of the first stories that the former police chief told me, Chief Sockman, about the results of, of a heavy rain and the impact it had on his office. And so I, I was not happy about hearing our chief of police was in a soggy office as a result of rains. So, you know, we've, we've definitely, I have to put this on our list of projects to address. Now, earlier this year, Assemblyman Jim Cooper, his staff asked that if the city of Galt had any projects that the assemblyman could put forth as request at the, the annual Assembly Member Request Day. And I know that that's probably occurring sometime this month. We did put forth a need for funding for the roof repair, in addition to some other repairs to this, this building to the assemblyman. We have not heard back. If we are awarded state dollars for this, I will be more than happy to come back to the council and tell you the good news. And so that's, it'll be four hundred thousand dollars or four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars saved from the general fund. City Hall renovation, we've got multiple phases here. Phase one, we're looking at upgrading our ADA facilities and making sure that City Hall is ADA compliant. That area has become quite litigious, especially when it comes to local governments and governments in general. And I can tell you, I, in my former position, in addition to being Assistant City Manager, I was also the city's risk manager and spent quite a bit of time dealing with ADA issues for that city. And so I was happy to see these upgrades. We're also making security upgrades to the City Clerk's Office as well as here in phase two, we want to remodel the public access area for the finance department to make it easier for the public to come in and take care of their business with the city. And so these are some of the things that we're planning to do with that renovation. With the street right-of, right-of-way, water distribution system maintenance and wastewater collection maintenance, again, these are all preventive maintenance projects. Streets, we're looking to maintain to ensure the curbs, gutters, signs and barricades, lightings, and other features are up to, up to par. Water distribution, we want to ensure the valves, blow-offs, hydrants, piping, and other features of the system are taken care of. And wastewater collection, same situation. We want to make sure that our manholes and piping and other miscellaneous features are taken care of. These systems are critical for the city and our citizens. So failure of these systems is not an option. And so I applaud Director Selling and his team for making sure that they stay on and stay over these, these improvements that need to be made to these systems to ensure their viability and fortification. The East Gun Range, and so this year we'll be looking to make improvements in lighting, storage, and security. The next item is Corillian Boulevard. Now, we're going to hear the Corillian Boulevard item later in this council meeting. And we know that it's an issue. We know that there's going to have, there's going to be work to be done. And so we've decided to put away about two hundred and fifty thousand. And so we've decided to put away about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from the Traffic Impact Fund, Fund eleven. Uh, because we know there's going to, we're gonna need funding for these projects. And so when we come back after doing our analysis of Corillian and and Director Hoffman will. Explain all that in that item, but when we come back to you on an annual basis and with um, um, suggestions for projects. Our um, intersection mitigation, um, the conversation will be about the project itself. And not necessarily about where's the money coming from, because we've already put it aside. Uh, the next item is the Fourth Street Corridor, uh, ADA sidewalk improvements. And this is to provide planning, designing and construction and ADA improvements along Fourth Street. And so we, again, we want to stay up to speed on the ADA um, access. And council members, that concludes my discussion about capital improvement projects uh, that have been added to the budget. Uh, are there any questions?
I have a quick question. I know, again, I, we spoke about this earlier, um, in regards to City Hall. I just want to be very clear, as I asked you earlier, that um, you know, the council was gonna be. I think there was another council member actually asked this question through email that you presented to all of us about um, remodeling City Hall and some of the things and. And the perception might have been that we're, you're gonna spend a bunch of money on City Hall for, for the staff and all that and and you um. Had explained to me, just like you just did, that, you know, most of the stuff is ADA, um, you know, preventing uh, us from getting hit with the lawsuit, uh, which is commonplace these days. And updating some things that are outdated in regards to that. And so um, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, that. That that was the case or not, this is not just uh, you know, uh, putting a minibar in Lorenzo Heinz's office or um, stuff like. Not some member of Vanderburgh, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You hit right on it. You know, reading through the uh, the packet on the City Hall renovation, it said it's multi-stages. So this fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for, I believe that was the correct, just for right now this year. That's going to be the, for the items you mentioned, or how much work is that going to cover?
I believe it's to cover both phases, um, although Director Selling is on the line, he could probably give us some more background.
Yeah, can you go back to that uh, description there? Uh, Lorenzo, thank you. So on the phases, really, the ADA upgrades, uh, I think are rough engineer's estimate. Um, you know, looking at the, the um, the restrooms and and then clearing a little space out in the uh. In the, in the council chambers, uh, we're probably in the, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand range for that piece. Uh, the city clerks, uh, I don't have a number on that. I know we did the doors. Uh, I think that was in two, twenty nineteen, actually. Uh, so that part is done, uh, but the uh, phase two for the finance department, I know we got a rough estimate on that. And I think it was thirty seven thousand dollars for that, so. So the, the fifty thousand, to answer your question, council member, is likely for the ADA and maybe the finance department uh, piece.
Okay, so. When I, when I look at this and I, I think about the citizens looking at it. I'm not saying any of these things wouldn't be nice, but if they're not getting their lawns mowed. They see, you know, you're redesigning the city, City Hall, but you're failing to repair, you know, walk-in refrigerator at the Jabola Center or. Uh, you know, uh, continuing the minimal lawn care for the citizens, so it, it seems a little out of balance to me on that item. Um, and I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, say you're doing anything wrong, it's just that's how I feel about it. I, I'd much rather see, you know, the walk-in refrigerator repaired. It's been, uh, it's been a point of contention for a while. And then the only other item I had is on the library, that money is already spent or not?
No, there's about forty six, forty seven thousand dollars that the city had budgeted for inspection services. For the library expansion project, however, uh, my understanding is we're waiting on uh, funding for the actual project, which I believe will come through the county. So that money is essentially um, spoken for, if you will, uh, in, in anticipation of uh, future funding from the county.
Okay, so that would be like grant funds as well, and so it's not necessarily general budget funds and uh, yeah.
No, the, the forty six, forty seven thousand dollars, uh, my understanding is that's general fund money.
Okay, and then are we um, taking into consideration what may happen to the market property and how that will affect that property?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I'll give you my quick take, but uh, the city manager or uh, or Director Hoffman may have some, some thoughts on that too. My understanding is that the library would remain where it is, at least. Uh, you know, for the next few to several years, depending on if any money, uh, you know, comes along for. The Galt Market Improvements and depending on what the staging of, uh, you know, those improvements may be. But uh, that's my understanding. They may have uh, additional comment.
And, and I agree with Director Selling. Um, we get this question quite a bit. When we present the Galt Market Plan to the public and to some of our uh, our groups, our interest groups here in the city. And I always tell folks that, you know, the, the, the library is still there. We're still, we, we have no intention of moving it unless there's a community discussion. About perhaps if we move it, then perhaps we can find a place for a new library and maybe actually redo the library. And uh, but that's a community discussion that we have to have uh, between the council and the community. But for right now, it stays in the Galt Market exactly where it is.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Um, just to piggyback on that question, um, I, I, again, I, I totally, you know, this was kind of what I said earlier. When you and I were talking, uh, you know, people are gonna say, you know, well, why can't we up our landscaping service level if we're gonna do X, Y, Z? So I, I understand a lot of this is ADA and, and uh, so I, I really um, would lead me to the, the other thing is where you and I discussed. And I, I would like you to reiterate that, that this is this, this budget you're presenting us tonight, these adjustments, this does not mean that. You know, next month, when you come to the council and we start talking about, you know, policy and direct, and you know, priorities that the council. And we have all been discussing in our strategic planning meetings, that we don't start making adjustments and tweaks to those things. This is not just a one and done thing here, um, that we're doing, is that correct?
That is correct. This, you know, I see budgets as a fluid document. And so this represents our policy at this point in time. Um, as I mentioned, those pressures that I mentioned, the general, that are on the general fund. I'm, I will be returning to council um, with uh, related staff and we'll be, we'll be discussing those things. And landscaping is at the top of my list. Um, the city of Galt has uh, a, a large number of parks. Um, and I think the parks per capita far exceeds uh, the, the cities to the north and to the south of us. And so, you know, we've, we as a city have committed to keeping that up. And so I've got to figure out a way that um, allows us to do that within the constraints of this budget.
And in regards to the library, um, so we just did a remodeling of the library, so the remodeling of the library that was already completed. And the expansion of the library that Mr. Selling was just speaking of, these are two different things. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe Mr. Selling is, yeah.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, cuz I was, that confused me a little bit too. I thought they were kind of one of the same. I thought that was a past project. Um, and just my two cents on the library, you know, um, I'll be honest with you, I, I was pleased to hear and, you know, your market presentations that. Initially, there's no plan to do anything with the library, um, initially, because um, one thing, it's a little bit of a point of contention for me is that. You know, it was named after Mary Nalorance, and I think that I had this weird thing with you, you know, you dedicate something and then. It kind of gets moved later, and I mean, I know the name would go with it and all that, but it's just kind of a, just be a little bit of a. Hang up, I think, with the community that we would have to really work through, if should that come ever in the future. I just want to throw that in there. But um, anyways, uh, that's all I had on this particular item, so.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, Mr. Heinz, I have a just, uh, only I would like to make a comment on a city renovation. Uh, that's from the general fund, right? And fifty thousand dollar, I believe that's a very much estimate, right? Uh, first phase, uh, we're doing to do the ADA compliance. And that's very important for the city, for everybody. In these days, uh, we all know the ADA compliance is, is necessary to do upgrade, whatever we do needed. And the other, the second phase, we're gonna do a little bit renovation on. On the finance side and also city clerk and also including the ADA should be qualified on that side too, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we want to make sure that City Hall is ADA compliant from the time a person comes in. Um, all their movements within City Hall and until the time they leave.
Thank you, thank you, sir. That I just want to be clarification on that.
Um, and Mr. Mayor, if. That concludes the uh, questions and comments. I'll, I'll go to the last slide.
But one last quick question in regards to the work that Mike Selling mentioned in the remodel, um, you know, it, are we, do we? Do we have, he said there was an estimate by staff, is, when that work actually goes to get completed, are those? Projects that we bid, you know, you know, go with low bidder, or is those, are those under a certain threshold where we don't do that? Can you remind the folks watching what we do with those?
Yeah, sure, uh, Mayor. Uh, that bid actually on the finance side, I believe that was actually from a potential vendor, uh, that we got a quote from. Uh, so, you know, we'll review it. We just got it, I think, uh, uh, late last week, if I recall. Uh, and then uh, we don't have a, a good number. We just had a budgeted number for the uh, council chambers and bathrooms and whatnot. Um, so uh, we'll be looking to refine that as we move forward, but the threshold is uh, if it's under thirty thousand dollars. Uh, it's under the city manager's uh, authority. And if it's over that, um, then uh, we would go to council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all I had, Mr. Heinz, at this point.
Alright, um. Okay, so we're done with our capital improvement projects. And I just wanna, just had a short word to say about the uh, master fee schedule. And which is also in the schedules that were released. Uh, I just wanted to remind the council and the public that the, the fees are side by side. The old feed is, old fee uh, is uh, the old fee is on the left-hand column. Um, it's in, I believe, the brown heading and the new fee is in the right-hand column with a blue heading. Um, these, these fees uh, are increased based on the CPI or they're increased based on our market. Um, or they're increased based on council action, um, other, other governmental agencies, conversations with the directors. Um, um, and so there are a lot of variables that, that go to increasing those fees. If there are any questions about the fees, um, the uh, the executive team is, is ready to respond. Uh, to any questions about fee increases, um, we try to keep them uh, reasonable, uh, but yet. Um, uh, yet the effort here is to cover the city's costs. No one is trying to make a profit here. That's the enterprise funds. Um, that's not our normal fees. We're trying to cover our costs. And as I mentioned earlier, our costs keep creeping up, and so these fees uh, keep creeping up as well.
Uh, Mr. Heinz, looking through the uh, after we spoke, I went the, the rest of the way through the. Through the fee schedule and I, as I told you earlier, I was happy to see, you know, some of the things that most concerned me like, um. You know, sports fees and all that kinds of stuff, and none of those are really changed. I know those have been a point of contention in the past. Uh, especially with myself, um, if not the whole council. Um, but uh, you know, I, the ones that did change, you know, it was, you know, some things relating to uh, development, you know, it's like a. Three or four dollar increase on something that's already a couple hundred. So it wasn't like something was doubling or it was just very small uh, for, for the most part. So um, I understand that, you know, uh, cost of living, um, and, and just these, like you said, CPI changes. So I just wanted to throw it out there that, um, that I had reviewed a lot of this and I didn't see anything that was alarming to me. So.
Understood. Well, alright, well, thank you, sir. Uh, any, um, any of the other members, if you have any questions regarding the fee schedule? Again, the experts are on the line. Um, and if not, I'll, I'll go ahead and make one comment and then get off the stage. Alrighty, well, very good. Um, I also wanted to uh, make sure that the council and the public knew. That I added um, a new twist to the budget resolution. And so I am asking council for authority, apparently I already have authority to move dollars within a department. To move it from line items within Public Works and line items within the PD, with the blessing, of course, of the leadership of that department. What I'm asking for that's new in this budget resolution is the ability to move budget authority from department to department. So within the departments, um, we have some situations where. One department is sitting on savings that it may not be able to relinquish by the end of the fiscal year. But I may have another department that may have just received uh, a grant or some other project that's needed. And that um, that department is in need of spending authority. And so I'm asking the council if I could get that, uh, the ability to do that. Um, I will report out on any changes that I make in that nature uh, to council and just to make sure you're all aware. But I wanted the ability to solve as many problems in-house. Without having to come, come to council when we need these, these extra, you know, items. And again, it gives me the flexibility to solve these issues in-house. And I'll, and I'll report out to council at a subsequent time as to what I've done and why.
So sir, as an example of that, uh, just for the public watching, let's say, um. You had earmarked a certain amount of dollars for, let's say, the finance or IT department. And then um, found out that there was a pressure from the council to. I don't know, up the landscaping level of service and that was gonna, it require, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for something. Um, if you could, this would give you the latitude to pull from finance to go to Parson Rec. Things like that without having to formally go before council each time for every little tiny thing.
Right.
You would report all these to us, obviously, for those of you who don't know, I mean, obviously, even though you have that latitude, if there's something that you do that we're all in, where all of us are unhappy with. You know, clearly you're gonna avoid that kind of stuff.
Sir. Yes, sir. But, but I think the, the example you brought up was perfect. Um, because during the growing season, that March, April, May area timeframe, uh, everything's in bloom. Uh, we've got weeds just, you know, just going, going gangbusters. And while we have a static budget for landscaping, and by the way, for the public, I will be looking into that budget. But it would have been nice to, to this past spring, be able to, alright, we've got budget savings sitting in Department X. I go to the leadership of that department, listen, are you gonna be able to use that savings? Uh, for anything that you have coming up? And if the answer is no, then I'd like to be able to transfer that authority over to Parks and Rec. I'll let the council know, I've done this, here's why, and it gives me that flexibility.
Alright, let's get some input from the rest of the council here on this. Um, I think Mr. Lozano, I, I apologize, I don't know which one you're gonna hand up, but we'll. Okay, pointing that way, but okay, uh, Councilor Papin, I'll go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I agree that this, it makes sense, um, just uh, on a lower level. Um, anybody that's worked in or watched uh, government um, budgets cycles. Has probably experienced the, somewhere around May. Hey, we've got all this money, you gotta find a way to spend it or else next year we're not gonna get it for our department. Um, so in your, your estimation, I mean, while this makes sense. You know, on a lower level, just philosophically, do you think that this is something that uh, kind of combats that, which I've always seen is pretty wasteful?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that is not a policy I'm a fan of. Um, and so I've only been here ten months and this is my first year in. Uh, but I will be watching the year-end expenditures to see if they tick up. Um, so I'm not a fan of that. Um, the fact that you have money left over means we didn't plan well. Or something happened that we didn't anticipate. Um, for those departments that have the ability to plan well. And if there's dollars left over, we've gotta, we've gotta do better, do a better job of planning. Um, but I agree with, I, I agree with your philosophy, Councilmember Papin, now, I'm, I'm not a fan of the year-end. Um, if there's dollars left over, I'd rather see those dollars um, used for, in a department that needs the help. Or have those dollars flow to the general fund balance.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano. Thank you. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I, um, I agree with that. Uh, we, I do see that a lot in, uh, government spending. Uh, you know, hurry up and buy a hundred thousand more pencils because we might need them one day. Uh, and we have ten dollars left in the budget. You know, that happens all the time. And I think this is a, 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 a way that the CEO of our organization has the ability to make those adjustments, um, at, at the year-end or spring or whenever, actually, but uh, quite honestly, um, I spend a lot of time with city manager, um, mostly on Zoom these days, but um, you know, uh, I, I, I know he's doing a, a good job. I know he's, uh, watching and listening to what I'm saying in terms of my philosophy and, and certainly uh, the constituencies that we serve. And so, uh, I'm comfortable with this, this, uh, authorization. Um, and, uh, and quite honestly, he knows that if I think that he's doing something that he shouldn't be, uh, we're going to have a discussion about it. So, um, yeah, so I, 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 uh, philosophically, I think it's a great move. Um, and, and I would be, uh, in favor of that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I, I would just like to piggyback back on that, just to, to say to the public, you know, um, again, like I said earlier, there's a certain amount of inherent trust that we have to, um, relinquish to Mr. Heinz. You know, we hired him for one of the main reasons in that hiring process was his financial expertise and he clearly, I think it's fair to say, has more financial expertise than all of us on the council, if not all of us combined. So I think that, um, it would be a disservice to, um, you know, it's one thing to ask questions and, and do oversight, which is the job of the council to, you know, uh, you know, be, be the eyes and ears of the public more to, so to speak. But I think to, to micromanage down to a level where we're going to question everything and not give him the proper latitude and tools to roll his sleeves up, I think would be a, a doing him a disservice. So I think I'm willing to, uh, you know, uh, give him that, that ability. So that's just my two cents on that, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and so the city clerk has, uh, distributed a revised uh, budget resolution, I believe, to all the members and I believe that was done earlier today. Um, Mayor, I'm going to conclude by asking the public, if the public has any questions about the budget or anything that we've discussed here tonight, anything that's not clear, please feel free to contact me, um, through my office and I'll be happy to set up some time and we can discuss how this budget comes together and all the nuances as well. Um, and if it's a brief question, you're welcome to sign up for the first Thursdays with the city manager. We can, we can go through it at that point too, as well.
Okay, and this is going to be a public hearing right now, so we are going to open that for, so those of you who are watching would like to, uh, speak, you, uh, are you, if you are, uh, observing this meeting, you can raise your hand online and we will call on you. Um, so without further ado, I will, uh, Tina, is it okay for me to go ahead and open up that public hearing now? Okay, we are now opening the public hearing, uh, regarding the, uh, the budget adjustments that we have just reviewed. Do we have any, um, hands raised or any participants that would like to speak? Rose.
We currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay. Do we have any public comment that has come in regarding this item, Tina?
A no written comment.
Okay. Um, then I will, uh, give just another brief moment for those that are watching. If you have a comment regarding this item, you would like to raise your hand online, we will call on you. If not, uh, we will be closing this public hearing here in just a moment. And at that point, you will, um, if you have any comments or questions, you can reach out to the city manager like he, uh, described, or of course, reach out to our council members and we can point you in the right direction to get those questions, um, answered. So, again, if you would like to speak, Rose, any hands raised online?
Nope.
Okay.
No hands raised.
All right. Well, without further ado, then we will now close the public hearing. And I will go back to see if there's any further comment from council before we look to move this motion. No comments from council, okay? Well, I appreciate all the questions. I think it was a good conversation. I think, uh, um, I think we're, um, uh, it's good, nice to see that we are in support of this and looking forward to, looking forward on this. Uh, I will look for a motion now to adopt a resolution approving the midterm fiscal years 2020 to 2021 and the 21 to 22 annual budgets with adjusting appropriations and approval of the fiscal year 2122. California constitutional appropriations limit, number three, adopt a resolution adjusting the amount of user fees and regulatory fees for public services and four, adopt a resolution adopting the midterm changes to the California Improvement Plan for fiscal year 21, 20 to 21 through 24, 25 and budget adjustments for fiscal year 20 through 21 and 21 through 22. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion is approved five zero. Okay, we will now move on to item two, which has our Carillion Boulevard corridor plan. Uh, do any council members have anything they would like to say before we move on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I've, uh, been involved in discussions, uh, of this project since the Planning Commission days. And, um, I'm going to need to recuse myself from this item due to an interest in real property. My personal residence directly abuts the sound wall in Carillion. Given the high-level scope of the plan and prior FPPC decisions, it did not appear that I ever had a conflict, but given more recent FPPC decisions, after further review and consultation with the city attorney's office, I opted to seek advice from the FPPC anyway. The FPPC advised that I should recuse myself, given that my property is directly adjacent to and abuts the sound wall despite the fact that the plan is simply a guide for potential future improvements to Carillion. Based on this, I will recuse myself from this item. I will now leave the room by logging off of the meeting. And Mr. Heinz, please let me know when the item is done and I will rejoin. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I too, um, was made aware of some recent, uh, decisions. Um, the conclusion of the city attorney's, uh, investigation and the FF, FPPC investigation, um, concluded that I did not have a conflict. Um, given the scope of the quarter master plan and physical barriers between the project site and my residential real property located between 500 and 1,000 feet away, the quarter plan didn't, uh, would not appear to affect the development potential, income-producing potential, highest invest use, character and market value of my real property. And I, uh, may take part in this, in these discussions. I just wanted to make my colleagues aware, uh, that I did look into this uh, as it was brought to my attention that, uh, there could be a potential conflict and, uh, all legal, uh, advice as well as, uh, consultation with the Fair Political Practice Commission indicated there is not a conflict.
Thank you, sir, for that statement. Okay. Uh, Councilor Papinow is logged out, so we will proceed forward with the Carillion Boulevard Plan Presentation or Agenda Report, I should say, uh, from Mr. Hoffman. Craig?
All right, Mayor, members of the council, and let me share my screen. I would like to get my PowerPoint going. Let's see, can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So tonight, we are going to be, uh, I'm looking for the council to receive a presentation tonight. Open the public hearing and receive comments. And upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution that would approve the environmental document that was prepared for this doc, for this plan. Except the Carillion Boulevard Quarter Plan and Master Planning Effort as complete without approving or adopting alternatives one or two as proposed in the Carillion Bou- Boulevard Corridor Plan and approving city council's preferred guidance direction for, uh, future Carillion Boulevard improvements. And with that, uh, if I could get a little help from, uh, our city manager, uh, Mr. Heinz about what our action is tonight and what we're doing.
And so, thank you, Director Hoffman. So the city was awarded a grant, uh, through, uh, from the California Energy Commission's Grant Funding Opportunity Local Government Challenge Grant. And, uh, this program was allowed us to provide, um, the city with a climate action plan, this Carillion plan, and this is also the grant behind the development of the Galt Market Plan. So we've already incurred cost, uh, for this portion of the CEC grant of about three hundred thousand dollars. I believe the total grant was six fifty, Craig, if I re- recall. And so what we're looking for ultimately is for the council to accept and again, just accept this sort of, uh, visioning document because that's essentially what it is. But because of its implications, it actually becomes a nice blueprint going forward um, as to how we're going to handle or how we propose to handle the, uh, uh, improvements that are to be made for Carillion Boulevard. Can we go to the next slide, Craig?
Sure. It, and I think
Yes, you can take
You want me to take over? Sure. So with public engagement, what we really found is back in August of 2020, the council held a, a public hearing and at that public hearing, it was a long meeting. And the council directed staff to really take a step back and go back to the Planning Commission, reengage the, the public and take another look at what, uh, the city was trying to accomplish. Again, this was supposed to be a visioning exercise. It was meant to generate dialogue, but I don't think anyone had an addition, any idea that it was gonna cause some of the, the feelings and emotions that it did at that August meeting. So the Planning Commission, they conducted a public study session and workshop on this item uh, November 12th, uh, back in 2020. And the Planning Commission really recommended that the city council received and accept this study, this, this visioning effort is complete, but not approving two alternatives where they were prepared with this document, both being seen as too extreme. One, uh, a plan with a number of roundabouts and the other with a number of, uh, traffic signals. Both of those alternatives being way too, too extreme, but by accepting the activity, you would satisfy the grant. Then on November 19th of this year, the city council conducted again another public study session on the, the planning effort and what is being presented tonight was the basis of that direction. So again, a visioning exercise, the Carillion Boulevard. It's a planning level document which identifies proposed improvements which could be made when traffic demands more. This effort was funded by the Energy Commission and it's designed to fund planning efforts that advance greenhouse gas reductions to meet state climate targets and goals. These improvements identified as part of this visioning exercise would take place in the future and not all at once. So in January, the council looked at three potential different options. And what the option that the council directed staff to, to identify was this alternative three to basically accept the planning study to certify the environmental document and then to propose strategic improvements made to various intersections to alleviate safety concerns when needed within specific timeframes. And so within your staff report on page two and three of the staff report on this item, we identify a number of projects within that, uh, Northeast specific plan. When they were approved, the amount of units and where, when potentially they're going to build and based upon their build rate, those projects have the potential to impact Carillion Boulevard and what we're seeing. But what we're really seeing is not a, not a large increase in traffic, probably for until about, uh, 2024. So they're just starting to build now. You're not seeing that new traffic. And so what the council was really looking for was to take a, a toolkit essentially and take a look at each intersection and to analyze it when the needs take place, when the impacts to the community or the impact to the intersections based upon traffic is warranted. So you want staff to take a look and look at potentially adding crosswalks to various intersections, flashing weekends, stop signs. You know, maybe there's the potential for roundabouts it like a, a site like Walnut, but nothing has been programmed or identified and even traffic signals. This would all be well into the future. The staff-prepared guidance language, and that's included within your staff report. It's identified on page five and it would be attached to the resolution. In some of that guidance language, really, we heard it from the public, we heard it from the Planning Commission, but we also heard it from the council. You know, this idea that Carillion Boulevard, it should operate as a small-town boulevard that flows smoothly and safely. Uh, retain the road as a, as a four-lane road. Um, where improvements currently exist, all the way from Box Hall Avenue up to Twin Cities Road. Alternatives one and two, not approved. Uh, not reducing any of the landscaping within the center median. Not removing or reducing the landscape corridors. All intersections along Carillion Boulevard. Periodically reviewing for safety and operational improvements where traffic conditions warrant. Um, definitely taking a look, we heard some priority intersections at Lake Canyon Avenue is also, also at Elk Hills Drive, looking for pedestrian safety. And potentially taking a look at, at reducing the lane widths. Going from like eleven and a half feet down to 10 feet to add that to, to potentially increasing a bike lane. And definitely making sure that vehicle movement is efficient. And then the larger intersection at Walnut and Carillion, taking a look at that as part of the Walnut Avenue and Highway, uh, Route 99 interchange analysis. So I think the action tonight, we're looking for you to approve the environmental document. What the environmental document does, it allows you in the future, if there's, uh, a project that comes forward, it's shovel-ready. And so if we get some type of monies from SACOG or even, uh, monies that you saw were allocated within the budget, it allows, uh, projects to be built without having to go back forward or, or back, uh, and prepare an additional environmental document. So something that's really important. Again, you're accepting the planning activity and the effort is complete. You are not approving the alternatives prepared in the plan or the proposed plan in essence. And then you're approving, uh, the preferred guidance direction for Carillion Boulevard. And these actions will satisfy the requirements of the grant and ensure that, uh, general fund monies are not expended. Again, a visioning exercise. And Mr. Heinz, is there anything that I missed on that one?
No, actually, yeah, I think just the reiteration that this is a, a visioning exercise and we're just looking for the council to accept this sort of concept. And the concept essentially gives council as much flexibility uh, to address those 11 intersections as, as possible. But also requires council, also requires staff to report back to council frequently with either proposed, uh, uh, changes to those intersections or, uh, things that we've had to do. Um, I think so between that communication between staff and council, staff and the public. Um, and the fact that we're keeping it within the timeframe of the build-out of the developments in that area, um, also requires us to make these adjustments within the specific timeframe. And so And so those are the sort of the lessons and directives that we came away from at the last council meeting. And so we've got four or five tools at our at our sort of beck and call to address these intersections. But what's important for us to understand is that we have to address these intersections as council directed us at the last meeting within the context of the other intersections. So we may want to focus on one intersection, but we've got to focus on that intersection and how it affects the other ten. And so we took that to heart. And so as we're starting to look at these developments as the build out occurs, as traffic builds, and we decide to focus on one or two intersections, we've got to see how it plays going up and down Corrillian before we make a final decision and our final recommendation to council. And we definitely want to get the cup of pub- public's input as well in that area. Director Hoffman, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
I think that I think with that, that that concludes the presentation. I think this is just an overall map. I think the intersections that we are definitely using that toolkit on or the 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 blue triangles, you know, it's a hard stop up at at Twin Cities, that's a that's a highway and then project south of Simmerhorn to Bosso, those were approved as part of an annexation. You know, I think we're looking to do appropriate improvements as necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. We will be opening this up to a public hearing just in a moment and we're going to get some council comment too. I just wanted to start it off. Want to kick off this comment a little bit by saying, obviously, the council knows this this whole project has been a point of contention for for a long, long time, two, three years now with our prior community development director and, you know, a lot of input from the citizens on both sides of this. Probably more people not a fan of obviously the the extreme plan with all the roundabouts and all that. I I just so to skipping forward to where we are now, I'm very happy the fact that the process that you guys stepped back and and that Craig, you know, did the diligence of taking it back to planning and kind of reworking and getting their input and and now planning is given direction, which, you know, I think is more aligned with at least I say as I would how I feel about it. I like the additional language that was added. I very much like all of that. I like that there is we are allowed to look at intersections. And and this that this is going to be a catalyst for us to approach individual intersections that have been, you know, points of can, points of concern by the community, especially for pedestrian safety such as Lake Canyon and Elk Hills and these others, as many people know, has been, some of these have been talked about for years. And as our city manager knows, when we went out and walked some of these intersections personally with, you know, a couple of council members, he knows that the there's these concerns are valid and if this, if, you know, of approving this, just the accepting the the initial studies and in getting that stuff paid for by the grant and allowing us the flexibility to to look at these as a as a, you know, to afford, I think it's a good thing. You know, I was never a fan of the original project and I and I would think it would have never passed, but I think we've you guys have, I applaud staff for re redoing this and the city manager Heinz for really kind of taking this in a different direction. And I think this is a good thing. And we have these shovel ready projects. So when funding is available, like Mr. Heinz mentioned, possibly putting aside some funding, we can we can possibly get get the ball rolling on some of these things finally. So that's my input on this. Councilman Vandenberg, let's see, he has his hand up. So council member, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go back to the toolkit slide?
Sure.
And then then overall, this is long term agreement, for lack of a better term, that in.
Maybe this is.
I think you have, there you go.
It has a feel of we're approving all of these, but in a sense, maybe we are or are not, you know, it's kind of weird way to ask a question because you stated that staff will come back to council for any changes to a particular intersection of keeping a four lane road, the roundabouts, which was a big point of contention, were proposed as two lane roundabouts. Except for maybe Walnut and Corrillian. So how are you? How is the city or staff seeing that if if ever needed?
Well, I think the councils identified that several intersections, there are safety concerns about. And essentially on page three and seven or three and four of of the staff report, we put together a toolkit. And, you know, when you start talking about safety, you start with, can an intersection be improved with crosswalks? And maybe the next step is if the traffic's more, does it go to flashing beacons? Then does it go to stop signs? And, you know, a roundabout is a perfectly good tool for intersection safety. But it probably doesn't work at every single intersection and maybe on Corrillian, it only works it at one if you're if you're looking at Walnut in Corrillian. It's a part of a toolkit, doesn't mean it happens. And I think what we're identifying is options. That's what we want to present to the to the council is is options moving forward, knowing that we're going to continue to look at these intersections and make sure that Corrillian maintains is a is a safe roadway for this community. But this is all for the future.
Sure, I I agree with that. And you mentioned, you know, twenty twenty four, when is the, it's probably much longer, but when is the anticipated construction of the Walnut ninety nine interchange to begin?
Mike? Yeah, council member, we have just started what's called the project initiation document, which is essentially a pre-planning document. And that is probably going to take us the next, though, I'd say fifteen to eighteen months to complete. And that's all we have funding for right now. So you know, without knowing funding, it's it's a wide open question. Best case scenario, I would say, for actually seeing construction on that interchange, you're probably looking at ten years and and I would say very likely more. So it's it's a good ways off.
Okay, and that's that is my understanding that I had because it just it just takes that long. That's the process. So between you mentioned, Craig mentioned in twenty twenty four, twenty five, you might start seeing need for change or because of house construction. Is there any plans or thoughts of how the interchange will affect the intersections on Corrillian?
Yeah, the answer is definitely yes. So timing wise, you know, it's all going to be dependent, interdependent. You know, if the houses are ahead of the project development for the interchange, we will know, you know, how much additional traffic generation will be when the traffic analysis is done for the interchange during the actual planning stage. And so we'll be able to utilize that information to to help plan for the interchange. Right now, if it were to be done, they would basically look at the land use and there are, you know, tables that they go by for trip generation to determine what the projected volumes would be and then plan accordingly to that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Is any of the other council members? I can't see all of you, but if you put your hand up, it will show me your.
Mayor, do you want me to do away with the share screen? Would you like to?
Why don't we do that unless somebody asks to bring it back? Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead. I can I can hear you. I just can't see you. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity. First of all, on this agenda item, I really thank you, Keg Hoffman and Mr. Heinz. As you know, this agenda item, we almost talked about a two year. And that's why kind of controversial agenda item. And I'm very much happy, the agenda item, I look at the report and most of the report is follow whatever most of the, you know, the councilman member mentioned, something in their comment and also public comment. And approving this, you know, the this document, I will support tonight to prove the document. But the other thing I want to make sure on this report on page five, the guidance language including in the following. I I just want to make sure the staff in the future look at the guidelines and look at the any stop sign and look at the guidance from the council and go from there. I did not want it to, because this guideline is very much these people spoke and the council spoke. And, you know, we we have four, five meeting and with the Planning Commission, I have a four meeting and we have much more discussion on that. So I'm not gonna, you know, discuss too much on that one. What we want in future is already mentioned in this page five. And I will support this approving tonight. I don't have a problem with that. Thank you. That's.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Lozano or Van, oh, you had your hand. Okay, Mr. Lozano, do you have anything to add on this item?
I I do, but I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay. Well, with that, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing now. So this is a public hearing for the Corrillian Boulevard planned. If you are watching, you may raise your hand and speak on this item. We will call on you. Do we have any written comment on this item, Ms. Hubert?
Uh, no written comment.
Okay. Ms. Roderger, do we have any hands raised currently?
We currently do not have any hands raised online.
Okay. So again, if you are watching, this is a public hearing for the corridor plan, the Corrillian corridor plan. If you would like to make comment on this, this is a public hearing, you speak now. Otherwise, once we close the public hearing, there will be no more further comment allowed on this item and we will you'll be staff or council at that point. So Rose, do we have any hands raised?
We currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay. Well, with that, I will go ahead and actually, Councilor Lozano, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. So, Mr. Hoffman, I'm not going to have you pull the slides back up, but I just want to point my point of reference for my first couple of comments is going to be page five of the staff report where we talk about the guidance language. I just want a couple of points of clarification before I vote either way on this. My question is the reducing, do not remove or reduce the landscape center median, and then the one right below it is do not remove or reduce the landscape corridors. Now, not related necessarily to traffic, but more related to our inability or ability in the future to maintain those landscape corridors as it relates to the underfunded lighting and landscape districts. I have a little bit of a concern that we're putting in a public document that I'm going to vote on that we weren't going to reduce those landscape center medians or the landscape corridors. My thought is this, that that can be interpreted in an unintended consequence is that if our community says we want drought tolerant landscaping, we've already approved this document and as I interpret it, that we cannot do that. So what I would propose in those two lines is with the exception of cost reduction for maintenance. If if my colleagues would be willing to do that, the intent being again, not anything to do with necessarily the the traffic flow, but more related to lighting and landscape, underfunded lighting and landscape areas.
Yeah, that that's a great point, Rich.
I don't have a problem with that, Rick.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, with I I missed.
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor. I'll let you speak. Go ahead.
Mr. Lozano, I I think this is a good idea. I don't have a problem with that. Have we considered to reduce the landscaping, not affecting any traffic?
Thank you. I was going to say, I I agree as well, and I would even actually, that's a great point you brought up. And and my thought earlier was not related to the landscaping that you mentioned, which is another good reason why I think I should say on this now, but I know that, you know, I think on the last workshop, I think we had discussed, you know, that there was some interest in or there wasn't any opposition to, should I say, if we were to improve the bike lane that we could. I know there's some language in that guideline actually that says something about narrowing the the lane from eleven down. So 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 if we're able to do that and improve the bike lane, but what what if, and again, thinking towards the future like Mr. Lozano is 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 thinking right now, what if there is a discussion about trying to make these lanes more conducive to, say, electric golf carts or something? And then we find out that we need to lose like a foot of the center median or a foot of the right in order to make that lane wide enough for both, whatever, then we're kind of backed into a corner with the language like he mentioned. So that would be a concern of mine as well.
I would I would just mention that, and just for the record, so everybody is clear about what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, and and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. I am not suggesting in my my comments that we reduce it for for anything other than that purpose. I heard very clearly the community did not want to do anything with the lanes, either reducing them from two to four or from four to two or or making any improvements in terms of moving the median or the the landscape corridor area for bike lanes. I brought it up in our last meeting that I think it's going to be real important that we do what we can to reduce the lanes however slight to provide additional, but I don't know that I'm prepared to go as far as saying, you know, we let's reduce those areas for for anything other than landscape corridor maintenance personally. But, you know, the will of the council will be that. But like somebody mentioned, this has been a very controversial topic for many years. In my humble opinion, probably for some good reason, but not all. And which leads me, if I may, to my second point, I want to be sure that that as we the as we look into the future, that we're not looking at, and it's been mentioned, that we're not looking at intersections and silos. You know, there's a very good reason why we have a four way stop at some of our intersections in town because of increased school traffic and things like that. But as we start to look at individual intersections, I want to be sure that we're looking at the entire corridor related to that intersection. And and so I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Mayor, but that I I just didn't want to go down that road and people think that that's what I was promoting. So I just think that if we if we're looking at intersections, we're doing that. And if my concern is only in that our residents may tell us that they don't want as much landscaping, meet, you know, green, green space and that we have to do something.
Right. Yeah, I I would just respond.
Can you bring that language back up, Craig? I I just want to, I want you to clarify that.
If I may, real quick. I did, I read that or interpreted it a little differently. Make something drought tolerant doesn't mean you reduce landscaping. It may mean you change species of plant to achieve the goal, but not necessarily. That doesn't mean you just remove the plant in totality.
Yeah, I I think when what we heard from the council, what we heard from the Planning Commission, more importantly, what we heard from the community is when we start talking about removing or reducing the landscape center median, that's taking out the entire center median to add lanes or even the landscape corridors. Those corridors in in the center median, they may definitely change over time, definitely what we're hearing from the state, water reductions, you know, there may be species changes over the next twenty to fifty years. I think when we were identifying these, it was materialistically changing or eliminating that center median or changing or materially doing alterations to landscape quarter, but I wouldn't say those two items are in regard to whether there's grass there. There might not be grass there in a matter of five years, depending on what happens with our groundwater management plan and reductions for the state. And reductions for the state. I think. I would agree more with. Councilmember Vandenberg that. Yeah, the the landscaping may change. But not. The corridor, you know, composition.
I I think the way I'm looking at this language, it basically is pretty much just saying that we have some latitude with the existing lanes. To restripe or whatever to make the bike lane. More conducive or safer or whatever, and that's pretty much the parameters of this language. And then what what but what Mr. Lozano is asking for is he does, he's he's. His feelings are not to get into a corner with, you know, should we want to reduce that? I mean, both Mr. Vandenberg and Lozano make good points. I believe I agree with both of them, actually. I still, I I actually feel that I would still be fine with with. The language that Mr. Lozano mentioned, because I do think, I don't think by adjusting that language, you're going to get. I mean, the 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 most important language in here is that we're not going to make it a four, reduce it to a two-lane road. I think as long as that language is, that's very clear and that's that's. That was the road diet was was one of the big deals for me, and I think that. You know, that still keeps that in play. But I just, I would hate to see like. Us being, and again, going back to what my comment was, with that being said. Is I'd hate to say like, okay, we can restripe the lanes and make the bike lane, but man, if we could have just had. Six more inches of of width, we could have. You know, been been compliant to allow, you know, electric vehicle or something, you know, small, whatever, and I would hate to have. To whatever, I it's just my thought. I'm not, I'm not, you know, going to like dig my heels in on or nothing. It's just my thought. But I I I was still would not have a problem with Mr. Lozano's recommendation for the language on that.
Mayor, council members, maybe I had to add, this is guidance language. This is what we heard up till this point. When you start identifying. You know, in the future, could there be? Electric vehicles or is is there just a complete change in mode of transportation? You may have to take a look at this in 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 fifteen years, in twenty years. I don't know what Corillian looks like, and I don't know what the needs are at this point in time, but this is guidance language to help staff move forward now. I think we heard it from the community. They didn't want to see a wholesale change to Corillian Boulevard. And that's what this guidance language says. But in the future. Who knows? Some something may change and there'll need to be public hearings and come back before the council. Maybe something changes, but who knows what the future brings.
If I if I could just just. Speak to this one last time and then I'm going to be done with it. I I I think removing and reducing the landscape corridors can be interpreted a million different ways. The intent of this is related to traffic. I get that. I will, I I would. Venture to say that. Although this is guidance language and it says it's guidance language, when we vote on this today, it's going to be gospel in ten years when somebody pulls this up. And says, this is what the council intended. And I don't intend to reduce the landscape corridors for anything other than. You know, the reduction of maintenance on those. Decomposed granite, in my opinion, is not a plant species. That's a very viable piece that we could put in. You know, I would just like to see at the end of those two. Points that, you know, the that it this is not, either this is not intended. To affect. Maintenance of landscape corridors or or medians or something to that effect. And 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 that's it. Like I said. As sure as I am sitting here today, and I've sat in the council chambers before I go on the council. And heard people talk about what the council did twenty years ago. And fighting for this and fighting for that, and we're holding on to that. That someone will hold on to this. And I think it's prudent, at least in my opinion. To to at least address it. I think that the mayor's comments about reducing one, you know, reducing bike lane or I'm sorry, travel lanes. To increase bike lanes. I think we have that addressed in the. Third from the bottom bullet on that with existing traffic lanes, and I like that idea. Because I think we should move people off bicycles, off the sidewalks and electric cars or electric. Golf carts onto into bike lanes. I I think that's a great idea. And I think that addresses it. That's my only hang up with those. It's not even real hang up. I don't even know that. At the end of the day, it would be, you know, the 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 straw that broke the camel's back for me, but. I just want to bring everybody's attention back to May twenty second when we had our strategic planning less lesson. Was a lesson for some, I think, for me at least. But how we talked about our. Our landscape corridors and medians were were a priority, and so I don't want to lose sight of that. And 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 lastly, I think we can take care of some specific issues related to that if we address it in these two guidance pieces of language.
Thank you, Councilor Lozano, and you know. Although. Actually, before I comment, Mr. Splendario has our city attorney or our. Possible interns. Or acting right now, city attorney has a has a comment. So Frank, go ahead. I'd like to hear what you have to say before I comment.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I just housekeeping, make sure at some point we, I I don't think we technically closed the public hearing, so we're going to want to make sure you do that. And then on this item. I think a lot of the points have been raised. I think out of an abundance of caution, you certainly, this council could certainly choose to clarify that language. If it chooses, my plain reading is it is it's it's really clearly referring to the roadway design. But totally respect and value the idea to make it really clear out of an abundance of caution. So if that's the council's desire. You could simply, you know, direct staff, you could just simply add. Do we not remove or reduce the center median or the quarter, the same language would apply. However, this shall not apply to the landscaping. Maintenance or design within such. Within such median or quarter, something like that, and I think that would give it the intent. So I just wanted to throw out that language. As you guys, as the council discusses this.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you for that idea. So I I after hearing this, I I again, I. Mr. Hoffman made a great point, and he says, you know, this is just a guidance language and so on and that, and I appreciate that, Craig, and you always are good about that. But with that being said, I actually still do kind of agree with Mr. Lozano. In his statement that there is, there needs to be in order for this to have weight. And again, this doesn't mean that a council can't come along in five years when we're not here anymore and just go against everything that's in here. But I think that for this to have some weight with how this council felt about this particular project. I think it is important that we get. The verbiage as close to the way we want it. Regardless of that, because if we're not going to do that, we might as well just say, well, it doesn't really matter if there's any language if we're just going to. You know, say it's just a visioning or whatever. So with that being said, I would support. What Mr. Lozano said and Mr. Mr. Splendario recommended, I would support the additional amendment of that language on that one thing. And with that amendment, I would support this. Project with it with the with approval tonight from my perspective. Does any other council member have a comment on that? Okay, we have a public comment, a public hearing is still open. Do we have any hands raised online, Rose? Roderger, I'm sorry. Ms. Roderger, do we have any hands raised?
I apologize, I was on mute. I answered no.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And then bring it back to the council members. Does any council member have any further discussion or I will entertain a motion or an alternate motion for that matter?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Can you a little bit clear on the what language we adding? And I'm also have a question to Mr. Hoffman. The language already in it, what can be the difference? If there is a difference. Then we need the language. If there is no difference, but most likely this is the language already in it very much clear. So.
I think I think the language that. And clarifying the hop, Mr. Hoffman, you can comment. I think. Mr. Sandu, I think the language that Mr. Lozano is asking for is we just simply add. That says that we're not going to reduce the center median or the landscape corridor. With the exception of of situations regard regarding maintenance. Or something like that. So it it only gives not that leeway. Is that?
I I think the language that Mr. Splendario came up with is would work just fine.
Would you like to repeat that again, Frank?
Your idea? Yes, let me, let me, it's always good to draft things on the fly. We, the language there is do not remove or reduce the landscape center median. And then you would simply add, except that such restrictions on removal or reduction shall not apply to the landscaping. Or the landscaping maintenance within that within such median. And you would say the same thing for both. So the next one would say within such corridor. Does with that language work for you? Craig?
Yeah, again, I think we were talking about more physical improvements, but I think the clarification works. Yes.
Mr. Lozano, this was your brainchild, your thought on that language.
Yeah, I think I think it's perfect. Again, I, you know, at some point in the, hopefully in the near future, we're going to be talking about the 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 maintenance and. And what we can do differently possibly, and I just don't want someone to say, hey, well, you guys just, you know, you just approved this. And so. That does take care of it for me. I, like I said, I would. Be willing to make a motion after after the rest of the discussion.
Yeah, it is is fine. It is clear.
Okay, will you, you could make a motion if you like?
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion, approve in staff report with the adjustments recommended by the acting city attorney.
I'll second that. All right, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your fine work on this whole thing, picking up. On this, and finally, we can lay this to rest, so to speak, for a time.
My second day of work in Lorenzo. Two weeks before he was to start, and we were both looking at each other going. What did we get ourselves into? It 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 was a good experience. To listen more.
Always a good idea.
And and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to say that two thirds of the C E C grant. Have been addressed. By the City of Galt. So we have one more third to go, and that's the Galt market.
Okay. All right, we will move on now, move along so we can get through this meeting. Item G three is going to be the approval of the twenty twenty urban water management plan update and water shortage contingency plan.
Mayor, can we allow Councilmember Papino to reenter?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Would you like me to contact him?
Yes, please text him and we'll we'll wait for him to get back in before we move on. I apologize. So many squares, I'm. And actually, I need to clarify what I said for the minutes that it was approved four zero, not five zero when I said that. On the last item. All right. Welcome back, Councilman Papino. I almost moved on without you. I apologize. All right, moving on to our next item, G three, the approval of the twenty twenty urban water management plan update and water shortage contingency plan. Mr. Selling.
Evening, Mayor and council members. This item is for approval of the twenty twenty urban water management plan, or as the acronym goes, U W M P. State law requires urban water suppliers to provide more than three thousand acre feet per year or serve more than three thousand customers. To prepare one of these urban water management plans. The City of Galt has over seven thousand connections and provides currently approximately forty seven hundred acre feet of water per year. So we are obviously meet the criteria. State law further requires this plan be updated every five years, and the city's prior urban water management plan was last updated for two thousand fifteen. The plan provides information on a broad spectrum of water-related topics, including. Details of the city's water system, management and planning efforts. Projected water demands and availability, consumption targets and water conservation. I want to note that relative to the prior two thousand fifteen urban water management plan. The city's consumption was at a hundred ninety six gallons per person per day back in two thousand fifteen. And the target that was in that plan for twenty twenty was set at a hundred and seventy four gallons per person per day. Now, we actually beat our goal and I'm happy to report that. For the City of Galt, we are at a hundred and sixty four gallons per person per day, so about ten gallons per person per day. Lower than our target. So congratulations to everyone in the city. The the urban water management plan also includes another plan called a water shortage contingency plan or W S C P. The W S C P is an action plan that details how the city will respond in a severe drought or other catastrophic water shortage. As this is a standalone plan, there is a separate resolution as part of your package tonight. Which allows for independently amending the the water shortage contingency plan in the future, should the need arise. Mr. Mayor and council members, this concludes my remarks. After any comments or questions from the council, I would request that the public hearing be opened to take any public comment. Relative to the proposed adoption of the twenty twenty U W M P. Following the public hearing, the item will return to the council for consideration of approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. To speed things along here. We can, I can see if any council have a comment or we can go ahead and open the public hearing and then we can have council comment after. If that's okay with everybody. Okay, all right, we're going to go go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the approval of the twenty twenty urban water management plan update and water storage contingency plan. If you are viewing this meeting and you would like to speak during this public hearing, you please raise your hand online and you'll be allowed to speak. Do we have any written comment on this item, Ms. Hubert?
And Ms. Hubert stepped away from her desk for just a moment.
Do we have any hands raised online, Rose?
We have no hands raised online. She's walking right back in.
No worries.
Is there any public comment, Tina, he asked?
All right, I had to excuse myself. There is no written public comment.
Okay, well, if there is no written comment and there is no hands raised online for the public hearing. Last chance. I will now close the public hearing on this item. And we will now go to council for comment. Does any council have any comment or questions for Mr. Selling on this item? Mr. Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Clicking on the link, that is. Quite an informative two hundred and nine pages, I believe it is. I was just curious. We scored on the bottom. Section that had these like worksheets and they, we scored sixty eight to seventy five. Is that a good thing compared to other cities? Or is it? Some part we need to improve?
I believe Mr. Clarkson's on the line. I'm going to refer to him. He has a lot more. Detailed knowledge of the plan than I do to be able to answer your question, council member.
Yeah, this is Clarkson, city engineer. We, a score of forty to fifty is about average. For most municipalities serving. We're a little bit on the higher end because we have been able to reduce our consumption, you know, from our targets. From our use and and that is primarily because of the meter installation that we did back in two fifteen and two sixteen. So so we're, our marks are pretty good at sixty five to seventy.
Okay, great. That's that's really good. Okay, great. That's, that's really good to hear. It's encouraging that we actually, uh, exceeded our goals as well. And then I noticed on one of the pie charts, uh, it showed leakage and other as 20%. Is, um, that's 20% of households have some sort of leaky faucet, or is that what that's telling me? Or is that all businesses and residential combined? That's everybody, yes?
That's a, that's a combination of everything from water leaks through, through home, you know, home, uh, irrigation systems.
Hmm.
Uh, there's domestic use, industrial and commercial, also city water lines, uh, unaccounted for water, uh, where people have taken water out of the, uh, uh, out of fire hydrants without a permit. Uh, you know, it's just an estimate of, of what we believe, uh, is, is, uh, is not getting, you know, it's not going through our metered system.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilor. Good questions. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Clarkson or Mr. Selling?
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Okay, first of all, thank you, Mr. Selling for this report. This report is very much, uh, explained itself. The only thing, uh, I just a comment on, uh, report page number two, the second paragraph. The prior 2015 U W M P identified the city baseline water used to be 196 gallon per capita per day. The city was required to reduce the uses to 174 by 2020, based on the water production data for 2020. The city's water uses was calculated to be 164, meaning for 2020. Is that, uh, we are meeting the requirement? Are we, our city doing good, or what? Can you a little bit explain on that?
Yeah, so our goal was back in 2015, uh, because the plan always projects out. And so our goal for 2020 was to be at 100 or under 174 gallons per person per day. And so we've exceeded that, uh, savings, if you will. So we're lower than that, which is a good thing. We're by about 10 gallons per person per day. So, so we're conserving more than, uh, we were projected to. So we exceeded, uh, our goal in, in effect by reducing our consumption more than, than was projected.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Uh, Mr. Papino.
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, page 115 of the, uh, document, and my question was as to, uh, enforcement and, uh, how we go about, uh, trying to reduce water usage? And if that was directed by the state, or if we had leeway to come up with our own methods? And I just want to confirm that I'm understanding correctly that Governor Brown made an executive order back in 2016, I believe, that made permanent, um, a lot of the restrictions that people this time of year are complaining about. Um, and, and I might correct on that, that those are permanent, as it says in here, regardless of the, uh, level of water shortage that we're in, or even if we're not in a shortage?
So I'll start and then I'll let, uh, Mr. Clarkson, uh, jump in. Uh, Councilmember, yes, he did, he did make, uh, some of those, some of those essentially permanent. However, the cities and the counties, uh, have some latitude, if you will, as to, um, you know, how they, uh, in, enforce or, um, develop their conservation plans. And so like the city, yeah, like many cities, we have kind of a staged approach. Uh, and, uh, you know, and, and that's largely tied to directives that we will get periodically, uh, from the Department of Water Resources. Uh, with that, uh, and, and cities and counties, depending on what their, you know, what their, the basis for their water source or sources are, whether it's surface water, groundwater, some combination, and, you know, and, and whether or not those sources are delivering adequately can obviously take whatever, um, you know, steps are needed to, to conserve more in, in order to, uh, you know, maintain their supply. With that, uh, Mr. Clarkson, do you have anything further to add?
Yes, I, I will iterate that the, um, during that time, 216, they were, um, they were put in place temporarily, but then later, uh, by executive order, they were put in permanent. We have four stages of water conservation, uh, one, two, three, and four, four being the most restrictive, one being the least restrictive. And we found that our stage two, um, complied with the governor's, um, requirements, not only during the drought, but also when they made them permanent. And so we've been in a continuous stage two since, uh, 216, and we foresee that we'll continue to do that. And that's just pretty simple stuff, like not, not, uh, washing down, uh, concrete, not, uh, having a hose, uh, without a control device on the end of it, you know, not having free, uh, water flowing, um, without, uh, control, uh, having cities, uh, require irrigation system and low flow, uh, uh, items. So it was, it was relatively easy for us to, to, uh, uh, follow the, the requirements that the governor and the state of California put on us and put on all the municipalities. But it was pretty simple for us.
Okay, I appreciate it. Now, one thing that caught my eye, uh, out of that list of, of requirements placed in that order was that that all pools and spas have to be covered when they're not in use. And I don't know of any place in California where that, see that happen. So just kind of wondering as to, you know, what the, some of the things make sense, uh, and what our level of, uh, having to enforce those things is, it sounds like we're doing pretty good.
Yeah, and we largely take a educational approach. Uh, you know, enforcement's certainly the last thing that we want to do. Uh, so it's pretty much an educational effort, and we've, uh, got our water conservation officer, uh, on board now for the season. And, uh, and he's out there and, uh, you know, and, and letting folks know when, when he sees water running kind of thing, and, you know, reminding them of, of, uh, you know, the stage that we're in and, and, uh, and that they need if they've got a leak or something like that, that we need to get it fixed kind of thing. So, but, but it is a, uh, an, an educational uh, effort and not an enforcement effort in the sense of the word, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just, uh, I want to thank staff for an awesome report, uh, very thorough and self-explanatory, lots of pie charts. I like that. Lots of, uh, visuals. Um, I, I will say that, um, I have had some feedback from the community, um, in particular, one gentleman who received a notice on his, his front door for watering on, uh, a Monday. And, uh, and I thought it was very fitting that, uh, we're having this conversation when a couple of days ago, I was having this other conversation with, uh, with a, a neighbor and, and, uh, I, I, you know, as much as we do in terms of, uh, public education on when to water and when not to, um, it, it still seems to think, you know, fall through the cracks to some degree. And so, uh, with our, with our community. And so I really appreciate, um, uh, all the information that gets put out and, and certainly the efforts of the water conservation officer, um, and, you know, dropping those friendly notices off on front doors. He was quite angry, but when I explained to him, uh, what, you know, what the purpose was and, and when he could water, uh, he thought I was magic because I asked him what his address was and then told him the day. So, uh, it was, it was kind of funny. So continue doing what you're doing. We really appreciate it, and, uh, I, I appreciate the, uh, the, the thoroughness of your, uh, your report.
Appreciate your assist on that, Councilmember.
Right. Do we have any comments by any other council? All right. Then without further ado, I will be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution for one, approving the 2020 urban water management plan, U W M P update and its finalization and submittal to the State Department of Water Resources. And number two, approve the water shortage contingency plan, W S C P.
Moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Okay.
Seconded by, I didn't see who said that. Uh, Lozano, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Approved five to zero. All right. Thank you, Mr. Selling. Appreciate a good report. And thank you for the thorough staff report, too. We'll move on now to our regular calendar. Item H from the City Manager's Office, subject number one is the coronavirus COVID-19 update. Mr. Heinz?
Yes, good evening. Uh, can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. So all of the, uh, jubilation that you heard in the streets today, um, we'll be talking about this being the infamous, uh, June 15th, and, um, the fact that some things are, or the state has reopened. We'll talk a little bit about that in a, in a couple of minutes. Um, as far as the virus itself, it's still with us, um, but at much lower levels. Um, in Sacramento County, the number of cases have only gone up 968 since our last meeting. Um, we've lost 16 individuals within the county, uh, since our last meeting as well. Uh, but this, because of the size of the county, those, those are only increases of about 1%. Here within the City of Galt, we had an increase, we had nine new cases in the last two weeks. And, uh, we've also lost one of the members of our, our, uh, citizenry as well, uh, during the last two weeks. And, uh, so the virus is still with us, um, and so I urge folks to still be careful out there. So today, um, June 15th, the governor terminated the executive orders that put into place the stay-at-home orders and the blueprint for a safer economy. Um, restrictions that end today include physical distancing, uh, capacity limits on business, and the county tier system as well. Separate guidance exists for mega events, large events, indoor events of greater than 5,000 people, requires proof of vaccinations or negative test. Outdoor events of greater than 10,000 people, uh, we recommend proof of, uh, vaccination and a negative test. And so there's a difference between those two. The California Department of Public Health, uh, has updated the statewide masking guidance to match the CDC's guidance, lifting California's mask requirements for vaccinated individuals. The Health Department has also issued guidance for folks who are unvaccinated, and so people who are unvaccinated must continue to wear a mask indoors in public settings. And there was a long list of public settings I just highlighted, including state and local offices serving the public and public meetings. Masking is still required for everyone in the following settings, and that's public transit, hospitals, uh, long-term care facilities, homeless shelters, and, uh, K through 12s, childcare and other youth settings. And so if we're still getting, if you plan to get on a plane here in the next few weeks, the masking is still required. 72% of all eligible Californians have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. So that's good news. Sac County has administered nearly 1.385 million doses of the COVID-19, uh, 741,000 partial vaccinations, and 644 full vaccinations. So we're doing pretty well. Here in Galt, um, or here in the 95632 area code, 39.26 of eligible residents within our zip code have been partially vaccinated. And so that is, from what I understand, one of the lower percentages in the county. Um, and so we are, as a population, still at risk for an outbreak because that number isn't higher. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. The virus is still around. We've still got 60% of our population, which has not been vaccinated. And so if there's ever a potential for a recurrence, we're it. Beginning on June 24th, the city will be administering the COVID-19 rapid test antigen test at our Parks and Rec office at 610 Chabola. Uh, test results will be available within 15 minutes, uh, no appointment necessary, and testing's available every Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And Mr. Mayor, that's our update for today. It is my hope that this is our last Zoom meeting, and that when we have our next meeting on July 20th, it will be live in council chambers. We are still working with the county and the state. Uh, we're, we're primarily waiting for the masking requirements to be dropped so we don't have to spend a considerable amount of time in council chambers masked, all in mask. So, um, we're keeping our fingers crossed on that, and of course, I will form, I will inform council, um, the minute that becomes, um, uh, the standard. Uh, meanwhile, I will ask the commissions and committees that report up to the council to continue their Zoom meetings. And, uh, we want, and we anticipate that the first live meeting of the Galt, um, uh, government hierarchy will start with the City Council on July 20th. And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir, for that. Do we have any, uh, public comment on this item, written public comment?
No written comment.
Okay, do we have any, uh, online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, do we have any council comment on this subject? Okay. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation, sir. Very informative as usual, and I too am looking forward to the end of July. So that date is July the 20th, you said, right? July, July 20th is our next, okay.
Yes.
We'll move on to item H two, which is going to be, the subject is a interim city attorney appointment. Mr. Heinz?
Um, very good, very good. I wanted to, um, introduce, uh, Frank Splendario. Um, as, as we all know, Kimberly Hood has transitioned, um, out of, uh, service for Galt, and she's off to, uh, greener pastures. Um, and so Frank is our new, um, the, the new attorney that's been assigned to Galt from our, uh, law firm, B B K. And so I'm going to give Frank an opportunity to introduce himself and, um, what he can bring, what he brings to the City of Galt.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Um, good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, just wanted to briefly say, and I know my bio has been attached, and, um, just want to say that I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be here and, and serve the city. I, uh, appreciate and understand how important, um, uh, issues are. Uh, especially in a smaller community, um, like Galt, and just wanted to let you know, I appreciate that, and, and I'm willing to, um, you know, devote the time and, and, and effort needed to ensure that, uh, your legal services are, are what you need, uh, out of a city attorney and continue the, the strong, uh, uh, support that B B K has provided, uh, to the city for a while. So I don't have anything grandiose. Lorenzo actually just told me I was going to say anything, but I like to fill up space, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just wanted to make a comment, Frank, and, uh, I think I mentioned last time that you and I met, um, face to face, had a good discussion. I appreciate your time to do that. And, uh, it was, uh, I, I think, um, you were going to do a good job, um, in your role here. Uh, I know that you, for those of you that are watching that don't know this, uh, Mr. Splendario, uh, has, has served, um, legal counsel for the cities of Atwater and Plymouth. Um, one being, uh, Atwater being almost a sister city to ourselves in size, um, and Plymouth being a much, much smaller community. So I think he, uh, understands the nuances of, of a small community and, and, and how things work here and feelings and, and I, and I kind of got that sense that you do understand that very thoroughly from our meeting in person. So, um, I look forward to, uh, tackling some items with you moving forward here. And, uh, just wanted to say that, uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Does any of the council have any comments from Mr. Splendario or questions? Vice Mayor Sandu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, uh, you know, I welcome and thank you to coming, uh, you know, be interested in the city as interim, uh, city manager. And I did, uh, spoke, uh, to Mr. Splendario today fifteen, twenty minutes. And I believe we have the ability, knowledge, and scale what we're looking for as interim city manager. And I will tell, you know, I talk to the person, but I'm gonna tell them openly what I'm looking for. These two things very important for me to communication and availability. And I hope he's very much capable to do that, and I will support through his appointment tonight.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I look forward to approving this appointment. I've had a, a good experience. We haven't met in person, but our electronic communications experienced a smooth handoff from Kimberly to Frank, and welcome aboard. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, well, without other further comment, do we have any written comment on this item?
No written comment.
And any online hands raised, Rose?
No hands raised online.
Okay, well, without any further comment, we'll move this along. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Frank Splendario of the law firm of Best, Best and Krieger as our new assigned interim city attorney.
Moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Lozano. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion proves five-zero. Welcome, Mr. Splendario, and look forward to seeing you in live meeting, hopefully in the next month.
Yeah, likewise, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the last item of the evening. Actually, two more items, communication. Do we have any communications this evening?
I just wanted to remind council and the public that the July sixth meeting is canceled.
Thank you for that. What a great use of communication. I don't know if we've ever had anything. Perfect example of what to use it for. All right. I guess we should ask for if there's public comment on that, since we had an item.
No public comment.
Okay, Rose?
No hands raised.
All right, moving on to item J, city clerks, actually, I'm sorry, we skipped that item earlier and did that. All right. Items K, comments by staff, Mr. Heinz?
Right. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Claire Tyson and Michelle Neely for their work on the midterm budget and the rest of the team over in the finance department here at the city of Galt. Wanted to remind the public that as far as our first Thursdays with the city manager, because the first Thursday in July falls on the July fourth weekend, we thought we'd move the first Thursday for July to July eighth, which is the second Thursday in July. So if you're interested in coming and chatting with me about any programs or services or about the budget, feel free to sign up, and we'll be happy to chat with you. Looking forward to it. Also, to remind the public, if anybody has any questions about the budget that we presented tonight, about the nuances, the numbers, you're welcome to contact me, and I'll be happy to sit down with you and go through the numbers. And I'm going to turn it over to our Human Resources Director, Stephanie Van Stein, next.
Yes, good evening. I have no update tonight, but I did want to welcome Frank to the city, and we do look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Community Development Director Craig Hoffman?
Nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez?
Good evening. I really quickly wanted to just let everybody know that a little while ago I released on social media, there is a community survey that Sacramento County has put out. They are asking for residents, businesses, special districts, and community organizations to provide feedback on community needs that have been developed as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The survey will be available starting today, and it runs through the thirtieth of June, so we'll be pushing that out to our businesses and to our residents, and really, what they're looking for is feedback on how they can use the funds provided through the American Rescue Plan. So they're gonna be, I think, aggregating the information they receive and putting together a plan for the use of those funds, so we'll be pushing that out to our businesses as well as to our residents. And then also just wanted to touch on, I don't know if Mike Selling or Public Works Director was gonna mention it, but we held a kickoff meeting this week for the C Street Enhancement Project. And so I'll be working with the consultants on the outreach component of that, so we have a pretty robust, at least, you know, from the start, it looks like we are gonna have some significant community outreach as part of that project to the businesses and to the residents, so you'll be seeing information kind of pushed out on social media, and then direct invites to the residents and businesses that are impacted by that project, so that will be moving forward in the next couple of weeks. And with that, welcome, Frank. It's nice to have you aboard, and that's all I have this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis?
Yeah, Tina, can you share your screen with me? I apologize for my comments. They're gonna be a little long. I had an over-under of ten o'clock for the meeting, so.
I gave you permission.
Thank you.
So you were over?
No, I had faith in you. I, I thought it was gonna be under. Can you guys see that there?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we see it.
So I just want to go over, we won't be meeting in, the first meeting in July, so these programs and events that are coming up are gonna kind of span the whole month, so if you can bear with me a little bit. So our summer programs that are currently going, our public swim at the Galt Aquatic Center, we're open seven days a week to the public, two PM to eight PM. We've begun our camp summer, or camp sore, which is held all day Monday through Friday up until six o'clock. Our stagehands, June camp is started. And then on the twenty-third, we're starting to get back our special interest classes. We have Tai Chi that is returning back to the Parks and Rec rooms, and then Tang Sudo, and then our senior classes, our fitness is forever, and fitness in a chair will be starting in July. Again, I wanted to, to really bring this out. This was an incredible event again today. At five o'clock, there was probably already twenty people in line for the lobster food truck, and I'm gonna show off my dinner, and no, I did not eat this alone. My lovely wife came and helped me with the lobster roll, lobster tacos, and loaded tater tots, so I'm a little full, and it was a great event. I hope people go out tomorrow to Community Park and eat off those trucks. Just wanted to talk about the farmer's market again. We're still doing this on every Friday. The first Friday of July, we'll have a band back out there, and we will be having a Jeep car, Jeep truck car show. We're gonna do some pop-up plays in the park, so in July and September, we'll have plays, free plays for the community out at Community Park. And then we, we already talked about the, the testing. This will be a fifteen-minute wait to get results now provided at the Parks and Rec office on Thursdays from seven to twelve. And then upcoming is our IDC celebration, our five-k run, our parade, music, food booths, our swimming pool, our fireworks in the pool, and our fireworks. We're all good to go on July fourth. I just want everybody to remember that, you know, we weren't able to hold this run last year. Our registrations are a little low, and I just want everybody, if, if they can, to pass this information around. I really want to continue this event for Officer Kevin Ton, who made the ultimate sacrifice, and keep his memory alive by having this run. And then that's it for me. Anybody had any questions on any of those items, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, Mr. Solis, if you could, I'm sure you may have already done it, but if you could pass along some information, like the social media post or something I could reshare, or if you, I would love to help reshare the, the information for the Kevin Ton and try to push that information out to on my pages, so. Pass it along, it'd be great. Thank you. All right.
All right. Well, thank you, Director Solis, and job well done with the Parks and Rec budget that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So next up, we're gonna hear from Mike Selling, our Public Works Director.
Just real quick, yeah, I just want to also welcome Frank to the team and look forward to working with him, and also, as Amy noted, we had our kickoff meeting, and I think we've got a pretty good outreach plan that's shaping up here as she touched on some of the details, so we're looking forward to getting moving on that project and, and, and getting the input, and I think you know, this will be, as, as we kind of talked about, you know, even though there was a previous plan that was done, that may be at least a reference point for the start, but we're really looking at pretty much a blank slate, and, and, you know, and working with the businesses and the community to, to do, you know, a project that, that we can all be proud of, and, and obviously, we've got some grant requirements to meet, but but otherwise, I think this is a, just, you know, a real opportunity. I mean, it's a gateway for the city, for Old Town, and I think that this will be a real exciting project coming up for us all, so that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. And interim police chief Rick Small?
Thank you, sir. As Armando mentioned, the Fourth of July holiday is quickly approaching. We will not have another meeting before then, so let me be the first, hopefully the first, to wish everyone a very early, happy Fourth of July. This holiday brings some challenges for the police department in terms of both illegal and legal fireworks. So we would just encourage the community to be very, very safe in their activities during the holiday time. And also want to let everybody know that we are deploying additional resources like most departments do for that day in order to help ensure the community is safe. Also, as you might have mentioned, or you might have seen in the news, we're anticipating a heat event starting tomorrow and going through Saturday. As such, we are opening a cooling center. It will be open Wednesday through Saturday at the Chabola Center from two PM to eight PM, and so thank you, Armando, and your staff for getting that situated. So if there are people who would benefit from that, we just ask you, get the word out for us, help us advertise that so that we make sure everybody's got a cool place to be during those high temperatures. And I think that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Frank Splendario, do you have any, any additional comments for the group, anything that's coming up that we need to know about? I know you just started.
Yeah, no, I, I think I, I think everyone's, it's all covered. I'm just happy to be here and looking forward to working with the team and everyone. Seems like a great group, and, you know, it's my honor to serve the city, so thanks again.
Alrighty, sir. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Let's see, city clerk Tina Huber?
I would just like to also welcome Frank to Galt, and that is it for this evening.
All right. Administrative Assistant Rose Rodeacker?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Alrighty. So Frank, again, congratulations and welcome aboard. Tina, Rose, you can now send Frank the official Galt background. And now that he's, he's got his official appointment, he's, we can send him the colors, and he's good to go. Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you for indulging us, and back to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the next item, comments by city council members, future agenda items. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank your staff, especially this report with the finance report with every director. I really like to thank you, their work, they are hardworking, and thank you, Mr. Heinz, as city manager. And I also like to welcome and congratulate you to Frank. And we can work with him, I believe he will be best asset to this city. And I also especially like to thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I know he spent a lot of time on that Caribbean Boulevard agenda item. I thank you for him, you know, he spent an extra time on that. And thank you for everybody. The good deal.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papino? Well, I already said congratulations, Frank, but I'll say it again. And then thank you, Lorenzo, and Claire, and all the staff for making the budget as Councilmember Vandenberg said, digestible and understandable. I really appreciate the presentation and the direction. That's it. All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yeah. Armando had the under, while I had the over, so I have a lot to say. Just kidding. Welcome aboard, Frank. Thank you, staff, for the, the reports, the, the budget report was, was much easier for me to digest. I dearly appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. Welcome, Frank. I didn't get to say that earlier. I'm sure you'll do a fine job here in the city, and I appreciate your willingness to come join the team. As it relates to the staff reports tonight, very informative. I, I really appreciate the thoroughness that our staff puts into this. I also want to say that related to the budget, that, you know, there's been several times that I've heard budget reports from staffs of different, different organizations about that, that I've had the responsibility of, of being a part of. And I will say this, this is the first time that I really felt that wasn't the first time I heard it, and that says a lot to the amount of work staff has put into informing the public and informing us of what was coming. You know, we had a ten-year projection presented, and we, we've had all these things presented recently. And, and again, you know, kind of, budget is one of the, one example, but, you know, on planning documents and development documents and things like that, and so keep up the good work. I don't feel like I'm not informed at all. Oftentimes, when I'm reading through our packet, it's like deja vu, so I think that's good. And for all the staff, keep up the good work. I want to thank Ms. Tyson and her team for, for all they do, and in putting all this stuff together, and of course, Mr. Heinz for his direction. And that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Just to echo what people are saying, the council members, staff report's really good tonight. Thank you, Craig, for getting this Korean thing, you know, off the plate right at the moment. I really appreciate that. Mr. Heinz, a very good report, very thorough, easy to understand. Thank you, and, and the team behind you, of course, Ms. Tyson, her staff that worked with you on that. Everybody else this evening, welcome again. Frank, I would like to just, because we're, again, not gonna have a meeting before the Fourth, I want to let everybody know, the IDC celebration is one of my favorite events in town. Just want to encourage people to come out, take a look. The run, as Mr. Solis mentioned, is a great tradition. If you can make it out there, you don't have to run, you could just walk. It's all about just bringing awareness to Officer Ton and, and keeping that, that, that event going, so it's not too late to sign up, with your family, your kids involved. Parade starts at nine-thirty. If you are an organization or a business in town, and you do not put a float or a car or something in the parade, I say shame on you, because the parade in Galt is awesome. It is a tradition. I remember watching when I was just a small kid, sitting on the corner over here on Fifth Street, and I looked forward to it, so get off your butts and do something for the parade. You know, put a banner, put your kids in there, put whatever, get a parade entry. We want to see this be the best parade coming off the last year that we could possibly do. It's a great American little town. Let's show what it's about, so I can't emphasize that enough. But remind everybody to be safe. We have hot weather, of course, as mentioned. I want to thank PD for and actually, Armando, for opening that cooling center last night. We were told we weren't gonna have one, so thank you for doing that after all. It's a great, great bit of news. So everybody be safe out there. It's gonna be very warm. Uh, so everybody be safe out there, it's gonna be very warm and, uh, we don't want any, uh, you know, accidents. And then again, um, for the Fourth of July, everybody enjoy their Fourth of July, but, but remember to be safe out there. You know, one thing I've noticed on every Fourth of July is I see a lot of kids in the streets, everybody's having a good time, it's dark, there's a lot of lights going on, and I see people driving up and down residential streets, trying to drive around people's fireworks. It's a very dangerous thing, the last thing you wanna do is have a young child or somebody get her killed on Independence Day, it's just to be, so please keep, you know, everybody be safe. And if you're out there driving that night, please be safe and, and watch out for pedestrians. And, uh, with that, that's all I have, so happy Fourth of July upcoming, everybody enjoy their month off, I guess. And we'll see everybody on the twentieth of July, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting nine-thirty-one PM, good night.